Okay, we're rolling.
Okay, it is 6:24, we're out of closed session. And if I can have the city, Acting City Attorney, report out for us?
Andrea, you're on mute.
Okay, so for item 5.1.1, which was real property negotiations over 46th Hall Street, City Hall parking lot, and the City Hall parcel, directions were provided to the negotiators. And I will note that approval of the LDGA is on the City Council's open session agenda tonight as item 11.1.1. With respect to item 5.2.1, which was conference with legal counsel existing litigation, State of California on-the-go wireless versus Silco partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless, direction was provided, and no reportable action. And then as it relates to items 6.1.1 and 6.1.2, public employee performance evaluation for the city manager and the city attorney, I will defer to the mayor, but I believe no reportable action.
There were no reportable actions, correct. Okay, and with that, thank you. It's 6:25, we stand adjourned from this meeting, which I think brings us to our study session. And City Clerk, let me know when you're ready for me to call that meeting.
One moment, please. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to call to order at 6:25 the study session on September 1, 2020. Do we need a roll call vote? A roll call, I mean, sorry.
Yes, let's go ahead and do that. Councilmember Bauders?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Here.
And Mayor Pats?
I am here. Do I have a motion to approve the final agenda?
I'm here.
I believe I heard a move. I heard a motion from Member Medina and a second from Member Donahue. And Sherry?
Councilmember Bauders? He is muted. Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye, okay. Any ex parte communications for the study session?
Yes.
Member Bauders, go ahead.
I had conversations with the members of the team at RCD. I've also had conversations with the management at ECAP.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we go into public comment items for items not on the agenda. And do we have any speaker cards submitted, or has anybody raised their hand?
No speaker cards, and I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
Okay, excellent. With that, we will go into the study session. And is this Navar or Charlie speaking? Oh, there's Navar.
This is Navar this evening.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I will pull up your PowerPoint.
All right, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. And this is the presentation on the San Pablo Affordable Apartments project at 3600 San Pablo Avenue. Next slide, please. So here is the project location. It's between 37th Street to the north and 36th to the south. The freeway runs directly south of that, and San Pablo Avenue is on the west side of the project. The project area consists of three parcels that are all united as one project site. Next slide, please. And here's just some street views of that to orient everybody to what we're looking at. The top one being from San Pablo and the bottom image there being from the intersection of 36th and San Pablo Avenue. Next slide, please. And here's the teaser image for the project. This is the rendering looking from 36th and San Pablo of the seven-story building here that's proposed for affordable housing. Next slide, please. So for project background, the city unsuccessfully tried to acquire the property for several years for affordable housing. And in 2017, both the Planning Commission and City Council had study sessions supporting supportive housing for formerly homeless individuals and also keeping ECAP at this location where they're currently located. The property did foreclose recently, and it was obtained by the nonprofit affordable housing developer, RCD. Next slide, please.
Did that go?
We did a skip there. Go back one, please. There we go, thank you. So RCD is affordable nonprofit housing developer. They own Bay Bridge Apartments, which is on the east side of the project in Oakland, and also the Ambassador and Triangle Courts projects in Emeryville. In November 2019, City Council approved the predevelopment loan agreement and housing agreement, which provided RCD with $2 million towards site acquisition for the project. Next slide, please. So this project is planning approved under SB... will be planning approved under SB 35, which mandates ministerial approval. We'll talk about that more later, as well as AB 1763, which specifies that there's no density limit for projects within one-half mile of transit, which all of Emeryville qualifies for that. And normally precludes any planning commission or city council review, but here we are tonight anyway, so let's talk about that. Next slide, please. So the review and approval for the predevelopment loan agreement requires one community meeting, two planning commission study sessions, one city council study session, and the developer to make a, quote, "good faith effort to address community concerns and comments." And this is how they're being obtained through these meetings. Next slide, please. So at the planning commission study session, which was held on May 28, the commission had questions about how SB 35 and AB 1763 worked, and it was clarified that justice tonight, both the commission and council have no discretion, but the feedback is valuable and can shape the project in its direction. So the commission was generally supportive of the project, especially the 100% affordability and the permanent home being provided for ECAP. The commissioners praised the project team for incorporating the gateway features as directed into the general plan and design guidelines. That would be the artistic elements of the facade that we'll be looking at later, and strongly recommended that more open space be provided for the project, specifically to explore private balconies that don't face the freeway and the possibility of a roof deck. So they noted that the neighborhood is very short on park space, and the lack of open space is a significant impact to residents at this location. And they also provided suggestions regarding the finishes of the building, which considered the lighting of the building and also using darker colors for the majority of the facade because of its proximity to the freeway. Next slide, please. So on June 23, the applicant held a community meeting, which was organized by them and also held on Zoom. About 35 people attended, including staff and applicant team. And the main points that were discussed were parking provided, how much, concerns about parking in the area, affordability of the project, how deeply affordable would the units be, coordination with local planning processes such as the San Pablo Avenue corridor plan, and funding sources and the project timeline. And overall, there was a great amount of support for both the project and the design of the project presented at that time. Next slide, please. So for background, the plans have been revised since that time. That was pre-submital that those meetings were held, and now the applicant has officially submitted and provided plans. And those plans do add some open space. So the applicant looked at the possibility of adding a roof deck or balconies, but found that to be financially infeasible. And they could not relocate the larger units that along 36th Street to 37th Street, which would allow the opportunity to provide balconies for larger units. And the reason they couldn't do that is because of the design of the bend in the building. However, they did reconfigure the residential level to provide an additional about 121 square feet of common open space in the community courtyard. They also... the applicant also did change the main predominant building finish to a darker color gray in response to the commission's suggestions. Next slide, please. Other changes in the plan since the planning commission has looked at this and since the community meeting was held is that the floor area has been increased by about 5,000 square feet. The lot coverage... wow, I'm having a hard time, pardon me. The lot coverage has decreased by about 1%. The open space has increased, as I just discussed. The number of studios has been reduced by one, but the number of one-bedroom units has been increased by one. The ground floor retail space for ECAP has decreased a little bit by about 300 square feet, but is still well over the minimum as held by contract to 3,600 square feet. So still well over that. And vehicular parking has been modified to provide more accessible parking spaces, which has reduced the total number of spaces to 37. The bicycle parking details have now been provided, and the total number of spaces is 93 long-term and six short-term. Unit plans are also now provided, and the project details in general have been fleshed out, so landscaping, courtyard plans, parking areas, et cetera. Next slide, please. So the timeline that I kind of... was not listed out. So in May, there were the pre-submital plans that were reviewed by Planning Commission and community meeting. The formal submittal did not happen until July 22. That's important because staff has 60 days to submit a response letter saying if there's any deficiencies in the application or anything that needs to be modified. Today's city council meeting will... is being held. And then on the 24th, the second Planning Commission study session will be held after the response letter is sent to the applicant. So next slide, please. So what is SB 35? So it was passed by the state legislature in 2017, and it requires a streamlined review process. Emeryville is one of many cities in California that have not made sufficient progress towards their very low and low-income housing goals, and therefore is subject to SB 35. Next slide, please. And what does this ministerial mean? So it means that there's no judgment involved, there's no findings, no conditions of approval. All analysis has to be on a yes or no basis in compliance with development standards. And if the project complies with the standards, it's approved. That's that. If it doesn't comply, it cannot be approved. Next slide, please. So for Emeryville, this is done via zoning compliance review. So this procedure is that the director determines that the proposal conforms to the requirements of the planning regulations. And if it does, a zoning compliance approval shall be issued. And if it doesn't conform to the requirements, then a zoning compliance approval shall not be issued, but the applicant needs to be informed of how they can bring the project in compliance. So it's the community development director and not the planning commission or the city council that makes the decision on the ministerial approval. Next slide, please. So in terms of design review under SB 35, the development project may be subject only to objective designer view standards. So that means standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment, but are simply yes or no by a uniform benchmark. So design review under SB 35 is ministerial and again, subject to the zoning compliance review. Next slide, please. So the challenge with this is that most of the city's design review guidelines are subjective, requiring some degree of personal judgment. So staff is going through and identifying designer view criteria contained in all of our documents that could be considered objective, and will apply those to the project as part of the zoning compliance review process. Next slide. And the applicant has provided an objective standards table that's quite thorough and evaluates every standard to decide if it meets the objective criteria of SB 35 in the applicant's view and demonstrate how the project conforms with any applicable standards. Staff has identified the basic development standards and which waivers may be necessary under the bonus law, and we'll talk about that more later. Forgot my computer. Next slide, please. So developments eligible for approval under SB 35 have to meet certain criteria, like the land is owned for residential, 10% of units below market rate, that it has to be an ecologically protected area, has to be multi-unit housing, has to pay construction work and wages. The applicant has ensured that all these things are correct, and staff has double-checked. Please. And a development project proposed under SB 35 may include up to 1/3 of non-residential square footage. So this is how ECAP can be included in the project. So ECAP is not subject to any additional permitting requirements, and it's included in the ministerial approval process. Next slide, please. So what is AB 1763? That's the super-density bonus law. So that is a provision where if there's enough housing units that are affordable... Sorry, I lost my train of thought, I apologize. So it's an added provision for 80% of density increase for projects in which 100% of the total units are for extremely low income and very low income, except that 20% of the total units may be for moderate-income households. So next slide. Except, again, for projects that are within half-mile of major transit stop, which is applicable to all of Emeryville, then there is no maximum density, and height may also be increased by 33 feet. The applicant may also request an unlimited number of waivers of development standards and may also... that will physically preclude it from the construction. So next slide, please. So what is the difference between an incentive or concession or a waiver? So an incentive or concession is focused on cost, that it would make the project cost prohibitive, whereas a waiver is focused on physical limitations. And that would be like how I mentioned earlier with having to reconfigure the building to place balconies. That would be a waiver as opposed to a concession. Next slide, please. So for the project overview, the overview is to demolish all existing structures there. There's no existing residential, so that's not an issue. To build one-seven-story building with 90 affordable residential units and a manager's unit, to have a minimum of 3,600 square feet minimum of commercial space for ECAP, as I mentioned, right now it's about 4,600 square feet that's being proposed, up to 37 vehicular parking spaces and bike parking and stormwater treatment along 36th Street. And we'll go into those details. Next slide, please. So again, here's the site location angled in from the air. Next slide, please. So here's a proposed first-floor plan. At the bottom of your screen for all of these slides will be San Pablo Avenue. To the right of the screen would be 36th Street, and to the left of the screen, 37th Street. And at the top of the screen, it's adjacent to existing residential buildings. So we have commercial towards the bottom of the screen along San Pablo Avenue, parking towards the back of the building, and entrances on 36th Street that lead to the residential portion of the building. And on 37th Street, building facilities, if you will, so where trash is located, transformers, electrical, et cetera. Next slide, please. There is a proposed mezzanine or podium level to the building, and that's where the manager's unit will be, bike parking for residential, and some of the space would be open to below. Next slide, please. And so for the first-floor plan, you can see that there's a courtyard on the east side of the building, and it's wrapped around by common facilities and areas such as lounges and laundry. And then the residential units are located on the exterior of the building facing the 36th, 37th, and San Pablo avenues. Next slide, please. And then all of the residential levels, levels 2 through 5 are proposed to be the same. So double-loaded residential units and trash festivals on each level. Next slide, please. The unit plans are a bit hard to see here, but there's several different floor plans for studios, one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and three-bedrooms. Next slide, please. Landscaping details have now been provided by the applicant. You'll see there's some new street trees that are proposed, and on 36th Street, I'm going to talk a little bit more about this, is where C3 or stormwater treatment would be located off the actual project site and in the public right of way. Next slide, please. The applicant provided an off-street loading plan, so that shows where the loading will take place. And this slide is included. I know it's a little jumbled, but if you look to the right area of the screen, it actually provides a very detailed bike parking plan, and it shows that multiple types of bikes can be accommodated here, not just a standard two-wheeler that people usually picture, but also different types of cargo bikes and trailer bikes will have... there will be some spaces for those types of bikes to be accommodated in the parking as well. So the applicant has demonstrated this thoroughly. Next slide, please. So in terms of the loading, this is a little bit easier to see. The loading is proposed to be on 37th Street. Typically, this would take place inside of the building as required by regulations. However, this is one of the concessions that the applicant is asking for. And this also shows the in-out movements from the garage where the stacked parking will be located for the residents and ECAP as well. Next slide, please. And then here's the curb extension on 36th Street that's proposed. So normally, stormwater treatment is provided onsite. However, staff proposed that it be provided here along 36th Street is a buffer between the pedestrian areas and entrance to the building and the high-traffic corridor of 36th Street entering onto San Pablo Avenue. Next slide, please. So to get a better idea of what that looks like, on the left of your screen is what the area currently looks like. In the middle of the screen is kind of getting oriented to where the proposed C3 would be located if you just plopped it down and superimposed it on existing conditions. And then the slide to the... or the image to the right, rather, is showing what that looks like on the project plans. Next slide, please. And then again, here is the rendering of the building. You'll see the dark gray finish responding to the comments of the planning commission, as well as a very artistic building element that wraps around the whole building and is meant to be a gateway facade. That's something that's mentioned in both the general plan and other guiding documents such as the San Pablo Avenue Plan, and the applicant has incorporated that to the building. Next slide, please. And here is a nighttime rendering looking down towards... this is San Pablo facing the freeway. Next slide, please. And then again, we have 36 on one side and then 37 on the left side there. Next slide, please. And then here we have a ground floor. You can get a better idea of what the applicant is proposing, the interface of pedestrians. Next slide, please. And then what the building would look like from the freeway passing by. Next slide, please. So for general plan and zoning, this is a mixed-use residential zone, and it's in a mixed-use residential... well, that's for general plan. And for zoning, it's mixed-use with residential south, has a neighborhood retail overlay, and it's pedestrian priority zone. Next slide, please. So for zoning, the floor area ratio is 1.5 base FAR and 4.9 is proposed, so a waiver's requested. And building height maximum in this area without a bonus is 40 feet, but as I mentioned earlier, the project height can be increased by 33 feet, which the applicant is proposing. The residential density for base in this area is 50 dwelling units per acre. The applicant is proposing 240 units per acre, which is possible because under SB 35, there's unlimited density for 100% affordable projects. And development bonuses are not applicable to SB 35 and AB 1763 projects. Next slide, please. So for project overview, again, for unit mix, Emeryville, as you're probably well aware, has unit mix requirements, and this project does not comply with that, so a waiver would be requested. So it provides a greater number of studio and one-bedroom units and a smaller number of two-bedroom and three-bedroom units, although it does provide for all of these unit types. Next slide, please. So no setbacks are required at this location. The open space, as I mentioned before with Planning Commission, there's not that much open space provided, so a waiver is requested for that. And for landscaping, there is sufficient landscaping if you include the C3 that's located along 36th Street. Next slide, please. For courts, also, this is kind of goes hand-in-hand with open space requirement. So the court is where all of the open space is being provided for this project. And our zoning regulations dictate how a court should be designed and the dimensions of it, and this does not meet those requirements. And this is one of the waivers that is being requested as well. Next slide, please. So for vehicular parking, there's estimated demand of 72 spaces. However, there are no parking minimums, and the maximum number of spaces that the applicant is proposing is 37. And EV parking will be provided. The... all of the parking, except for the accessible spaces, is provided and stacked. I believe they're called jigsaw parking spaces, and it is possible to accommodate EV charging in those types of parking spaces. And then the bicycle parking, which I briefly showed you a picture of before, there's 93 long-term spaces and six short-term spaces. Next slide, please. So for loading, for residential uses, one small onsite loading space is required, but as I showed you on the site plan, there is not space for that. So the applicant is proposing on-street loading space for 37th Street that would serve both ECAP as well as residence if need be. So this would also be a waiver under the state density bonus law. Next slide, please. And public art. So it's only applicable for projects subject to discretionary designer view, which this project is not. However, even though there's no public art requirement, the site is considered a gateway site, and the general plan and applicant states in response, this project strives to highlight the city's thriving arts community in this gateway building. Next slide, please. So this project is not subject to CEQA. Next slide, please. So this project was initially reviewed by staff in April at DCC meeting, and staff at that time noted that in the initial plans, the utility wires were not undergrounded. So the applicant was informed that that had to be undergrounded as part of this project. That's a requirement of the general plan. The parking that was being provided could be reduced because there's no parking minimums. And we also informed the applicant that electrical vehicle charging is required. And we requested the applicant follow up with multiple people in multiple departments, especially building and fire, to make sure that the plans were feasible, as well as public works for items such as the trash compost and recycling facilities. That would be a discards plan. And asked for more information on loading for ECAP. And also, staff recommended the location of the off-site stormwater treatment to make that more feasible and to provide that physical buffer that we talked about earlier. So applicant was very responsive, and it's addressed all of these comments. Next slide, please. So for your consideration tonight is, does the council have any feedback regarding the overall project? And does the council have any feedback on the waiver with the development standards requested by the applicant? The applicant also has a presentation for the councils this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. So do you want us to see their presentation before we answer your questions? Navar?
Was that directed... I think however you would like to proceed forward with that.
I think it makes sense to see theirs, so we can then answer all... answer the questions at once.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yep. Seeing no objections or panic look on my colleagues' faces, we'll go with that plan.
One moment while I pull it up. That's not the right one. All right, are you folks seeing that on the screen?
Is their speaker here?
Sorry, I'm having a bit of a problem here. And I need to... Navar, is it Nick that I'm allowing to speak? Hello?
Sorry about that. Yes, that would be Nick, and there might be other people as part of the project team who need to speak as well to address questions by the council.
Okay, Nick, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, and can everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Nick, is there someone else we should have ready to speak?
Yes, so the architect team as well from LPAS. So I think that was Ron, Chris, and one other person. And then Carolyn Bukhart from RCD has joined the call as well, so.
So we need all of those people on right now?
I'm sorry?
We need all of the people that you named on right now, so Carolyn?
I think more so just for the question-answer later. The architects will have a section, though, that they need to be muted for.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead?
So yeah, thank you, Navar, for that great overview, and good evening, Mayor Pats and the fellow city council members. My name is Nick Cranmer. I'm a project manager with Resources for Community Developments. And I'm here today just to share a little bit about our proposed development that Navar highlighted at 3600 San Pablo Avenue, which provides much-needed affordable housing, as well as a new permanent home for the Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program. I'm going to get... I'm joined today by Carolyn Bukhart. I'm going to get, I'm joined today by Carolyn Bukhart, um, RCD's Director of Real Estate Developments. Ron, Ryan and Chris from LPAS, the architecture team, um, and then our entitlement consultant Mark Rhodes. So just to start off a little bit, um, sharing a little bit of, um, uh, resources for community developments. Um, if you're not already familiar, um, RCD is a nonprofit whose mission is to address the need for affordable housing and by providing high-quality, sustainable housing to families and neighborhoods most in need. RCD was founded by Berkeley community members in nineteen eighty-four, and over the last thirty-six years, RCD has grown to become a regional affordable housing developer and owner, um, now housing over five thousand residents across sixty properties throughout the Bay Area. Um, and RCD's mission includes a commitment to households with residents who have been homeless or at risk of homelessness, um, people living with disabilities and special needs, um, as well as the elderly. Um, so you can go to the next slide. Um, RCD builds and owns its apartment buildings for the long term. Um, we pride ourselves on being good neighbors, um, in the communities where we build, um, and we have a strong operations team um, that consists of asset management, um, and resident services. Um, we also have a community development department, uh, which focuses on, um, the communities near our housing, um, helping to cultivate uh, community leaders, um, so that we can have a deeper impact on the quality of lives, um, of our residents. Uh, next slide. So as Navar mentioned, um, RCD currently owns three properties in the city of Emeryville, Ambassador, Bay Bridge, um, and Triangle Court Apartments. Uh, next slide. Um, RCD contracts with the John Stewart Company for property management. Um, the John Stewart Company has been, uh, the property manager for all of RCD's properties, um, for nearly twenty years. Um, and they manage a wide variety of buildings, I think nearly almost four hundred, um, throughout the state, uh, including market-ready residential and mixed-use buildings. Um, and they're also the largest private manager of supportive housing and special needs housing, um, in the state of California. Uh, next slide. Um, so, uh, as far as services, RCD has an in-house resident services team, um, and we also contract with third parties for clinical, mental, um, and behavioral health services. Um, and our philosophy on providing services, um, is that services are offered to all residents, uh, not just, uh, those with special needs, uh, to ensure housing retention and economic stability. Uh, next slide. So as Navar, uh, highlighted, uh, the site consists of three, uh, blighted and underutilized parcels that front San Pablo Avenue, uh, between Thirty-Sixth and Thirty-seventh Streets. The next slide. Um, the project will provide ninety units of affordable housing, uh, for households, uh, earning between twenty and sixty percent of area median income. Um, additionally, twenty-five percent of those units will be reserved for formerly homeless households. Uh, the unit mix is targeted to individuals and, uh, small families. But the project also provides, uh, twenty-three percent of units, uh, for a large family, um, households. Uh, next slide. Um, so as I mentioned earlier, uh, so the project is in partnership with E cap. Um, we've been working really closely with E cap to understand, um, their, uh, their needs and to design their space. Um, and the project will allow E cap to bring their operations indoors, uh, which is really great. Um, during construction, um, the plan is, uh, that E cap will be relocated to a nearby location. Um, and we are budgeting, um, in the project, uh, so that it can bear the cost to temporarily relocate E cap, including moving costs, the rent differential, um, and any necessary coordination, um, and we will do our best to limit any impact E caps operations. You know, currently, uh, relocation is not anticipated for, uh, about two years, uh, just given the, the project timeline. Um, so we haven't yet identified a temporary, um, space recap. Um, but we will, uh, continue to work with E cap and the city, uh, during the design development process, um, to better assess their commercial space needs, um, as well as relocation needs. Next slide. So these are the, the proposed, proposed rents and income limits, um, for residents. So twenty-five percent of the units will be reserved for extremely low-income households with incomes not exceeding, um, twenty-seven thousand four hundred. Um, thirty-two percent of the units will be reserved for very low-income households with incomes ranging, um, from forty-six thousand to sixty-eight thousand um, a year, um, with the balance of units reserved for, um, uh, low-income households, uh, with, uh, you got sixty percent AMI with incomes ranging, um, from fifty-nine thousand, um, to eighty-one thousand five hundred. Uh, next slide. So Navar basically already went over the, this timeline, um, you know, as far as our construction schedule, um, and entitlement schedule, though, you know, so we have one more, uh, planning commission study session that's planned for later, um, this month, uh, SB thirty-five approval is required by October twentieth, twenty twenty, um, given the ninety-day timeline in the statute. Um, and then, um, over the course of the next year and a half, two years, um, we'll be applying for local and state funding. Um, and then, uh, hopefully with, with the targets, uh, construction start in summer twenty twenty-two um, and lease up, um, in summer, fall twenty twenty-four. Um, and I, with that, I think I'll hand it over to, um, LPAS, um, to give a, an overview of the design. So that was Ron, Ryan and Chris from LPAS.
Ron?
Hello?
I'm not seeing Ryan. Let's see.
So is, uh, just got on, is, is Ryan on?
Um, is, is that potentially his, uh, cellphone number? Let's...
All right, I can always start.
All right. All right, go ahead then. I'm not seeing this person, um, who it is. So go ahead, Ron.
Okay, can you see my screen or do I need to share?
Oh, no, um...
Oh, is it up? Oh, you guys do it, right?
Yes, I'll do it. So is it the next slide after this?
Y- yes, it is.
Okay, there you go.
So, yeah, uh, thank you for, um, taking the time to, uh, give us comment and review and comment of this project. So, um, as you know, the project is on San Pablo between Thirty-Sixth and Thirty-seventh, um, shown in yellow. Um, it is approximately ninety units of affordable housing and, um, in a actually a seven-story building, five stories of wood frame over two levels of concrete. I'll just go into the next slide. So this shows the, kind of the site plan and ground floor. Um, the intent here is to, um, continue the street pattern with street trees and paving, um, that is um, part of the San Pablo, um, Avenue, um, guidelines. And then also what we've done is we've kind of bolded out the corner of Thirty-Sixth and San Pablo. One, to make it a little bit more pedestrian-friendly there at the intersection, but also to provide a little bit more green space in front of the building, um, in front of our entry. And, um, we've then, as you come along Thirty-seventh Street, we have our loading area, both for residents and for our retail tenant. And, um, our main driveway entrance come out, comes off of Thirty-seventh as well. We've set our building back about five feet from the north property line up against the existing residential. Both, um, the affordable housing, uh, project adjacent Bay Bridge and the single-family residential, um, adjacent. Go to the next one.
And Ron, we're having some trouble hearing you.
Okay. How's that? Is it a little better?
That was better for a moment.
Okay.
That's better.
I'll see if I can be closer. So this shows the ground floor, uh, ground floor plan. Our major tenant is E cap, shown in orange. And so we have about thirty-eight hundred square feet of space in just the orange area. We also have their commercial trash just off, off of that, and, um, then we have utility space along Thirty-seventh because it does need to have exterior access. And then our driveway coming off of Thirty-seventh Street in the middle. We're utilizing, uh, three-level-high mechanized parking in the, um, uh, main parking area here, and then we've got accessible parking closer to our entrance. The main entrance for the affordable housing project will be off of Thirty-Sixth with a lobby, uh, manager's office, and then you come around with mail and elevators and stair over here. We go to the next. So within the concrete structure, we actually have two levels. And so along, uh, San Pablo, we've got a high level, high volume of space for the retail tenant. Um, and then we also have some additional office space that would support the retail tenant. Um, right now, we have access off of the main corridor. Um, what we will be doing is we'll be looking at kind of our overall tenant improvement, working with, um, E cap on how that will all function and whether they need to have additional, um, access from the space, either through stair or lift to make that happen. Um, we have, oh, go back a little bit.
Sorry.
Also on this floor, we have additional, um, utility space for, uh, water heating and that sort of thing. And then along Thirty-Sixth Street, we have our maintenance office, we have our manager's office, and we have our bike storage providing, um, more than one space per unit for, um, bikes in that area. Now we go to the next. On the, uh, first of the wood frame floor, so now we, we've gone from, um, concrete construction to wood frame construction. We have the elevators and stair kind of off of Thirty-Sixth Street, and then the corridor wraps around through the middle, um, like you see. The tan shapes are amenity spaces, but we have resident services offices on this level. We have our large, uh, community lounge, which is also used for, um, study room and what, or whatnot. We have community laundry here with windows and access to the podium courtyard. We also have a flex amenity space at the end of the hall with access to the, um, podium courtyard to kind of expand the offerings of how the building might, um, interact with the courtyard. We're relatively limited on the amount of space that we have on the site. It's a very small site. And so having kind of lining the courtyard with active amenity spaces allows that open space to flow both in, inside and outside. And we go, um, to the next floor. This shows the, um, uh, main courtyard, and we have, um, kind of flexible space, uh, for different seating groups. And the idea of this is to allow multiple groups to inhabit this space at the same time without feeling like they're intruding on other people's, um, activities. So we have built-in benches, we have tables, we have built-in, uh, barbecues, and we have raised planters that help provide a canopy and kind of sense of enclosure. You also will get views of the surrounding hills over the rooftops of the, um, residential to the east, or to the north, I guess. Next. So then as you go up the building, this is the typical floors two through five, um, that stack pretty, um, evenly with the larger units, the two-bedroom units at the corners wrapping, and then the largest, we have a three-bedroom unit at the Thirty-seventh Street corner. And then a combination of one-bedroom units and studios kind of wrapping around the project. Um, the lighter color being studios, the middle color being one-bedrooms. And this shows it in, uh, section. Now, oh, actually, I misspoke. We actually have four high parking. Um, it's three high above the slab level, and we added a pit, um, in the parking to increase the parking count. Um, this shows the building in section with the height of the, on the lower section, the height of the E cap space with uh, residential above, and then you can see the, um, podium courtyard on top of the podium, um, in the upper one. We go to the next. So we recognize that this site is identified as a, um, gateway site within the city of Emeryville. And, um, Emeryville has such a, a rich culture and architectural heritage that we tried to look at what would be appropriate for, um, a project that really forms a, a gateway to the city. And, you know, some things that we've looked at is, you know, we can do something that refers to kind of the warehouse industrial, um, vocabulary, which we've done on other projects, but on this one, what strikes us is just the art scene that you have in the city is really exciting. So we wanted to create a project that highlighted that, um, that vibe. And so, uh, these were just some images that, um, we found inspirational on, on thinking about how we might, um, apply just the vibrancy of kind of visual arts to our project. So we go to the next. So we created a building that was, um, fairly simple in terms of its form and, and kind of smooth so that, um, it wouldn't detract from kind of an artistic expression. And then we created these recessed wall areas that we would intend to, um, integrate wall art, whether through murals or mosaics or other kinds of graphics to, um, to make that happen. And so it also helps to articulate entrances, so you can see the Thirty-Sixth Street residential entrance. Um, above that becomes a, uh, kind of the wall expression all the way up through the building. It wraps around the top of the building, then comes back down, kind of tracks across the retail space and then back up. Um, and so it, it, both, you expect that the art itself will be dynamic, but it's also being, um, utilized within the building in a kind of a dynamic way. You can also then see the, the residential u- uh, windows. We've tried to use a variety of window sizes to, to create, to really maximize the views from within units with, uh, deeper, uh, longer windows and wider windows. It also helps create a more, um, animated facade. And again, at those corners, we've radius the corners to give it a softer, more streamlined appearance. Go to the next. So this is as we walk through, around the building, coming down Thirty-Sixth Street, you can start to get a glimpse of, uh, the building with kind of those pops of color, um, in recessed areas as you, um, approach the building. And then again, the, the corner of Thirty-Sixth and, uh, San Pablo, looking down San Pablo, you can get a better glimpse of one, the, the way the building is articulated, but you can also see the full extent of the retail frontage along San Pablo. And so the retail frontage, um, I mean, it is, um, E cap, and, um, it has a large volume of, uh, customers, and, um, we tried to make a rich palette, um, of material along the street that would hold up. So we've got, we've utilized the concrete of the structure. We've also utilized some wood, um, tones to give it warmth and to break up the amount of glass that we have in there, but we've also tried to make it very transparent and inviting uh, for people coming, using the services that E cap provides. We go to the next. You go, you can also see how, you know, we would be lighting artwork from the building to kind of give it an even, uh, tone all the way, um, up and down the building.
And I believe that's your last slide.
Oh, okay. There we have it.
All right, well, thank you. Um, I would like to quickly take public comment, and then we will hear from the council. So if any members of the public have raised their hand, I see one.
Yes.
Hand raised, and then do we have any, do we have any cards?
No comment cards, just the raised hand with last four digits, twelve eighty-one.
All right, go ahead and let them speak.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, when you hear a developer talk about wood tone, of course, what he, what he means is fake wood, artificial wood. And it's, so it's, and that's what Emeryville's been, that's what we rate. We rate fake wood. It's fake wood, but there is a, there is a nice, uh, sense of symmetry because it's fake wood for a fake town. I've lived in Emeryville for forty years, and I've seen, we moved from a town filled with vernacular nineteenth-century warehouses, among some, uh, you know, California-style bungalows. vernacular 19th century warehouses among some, you know, California-style bungalows, a lot of kind of interesting, some Bozards buildings, some, you know, some really beautiful architecture and vernacular. And what we've been doing over the last several decades is tearing it all down. We used to be a homeownership town too, now we're all rental. We torn all the interesting and vernacular architecture down, all of it, virtually all of it. And now what we've been in a mad rush to make our city look as much as possible like nowhere and anywhere. And that's what this project is. It's just ugly. I mean, I understand you, you have, you guys have a duty to build affordable housing, but it doesn't mean that it has to be so ugly. I mean, not, not that this building is any worse than any other building you've approved. They're all ugly. I mean, they're all, and they're all, there's no vernacular qualities about it, and there's no, there's not, I mean, basically, the kind of housing we've been building is basically ghettos of the future. Because they're ugly, and they don't, they don't have a, there's no, they're a simulacrum of place. They're not, they don't represent an actual place. The architecture is just fake. It's all fake. And I don't know why. Why, why have we chosen to do this? Why have we jumped headlong into creating a town that looks like anywhere and nowhere? From a town that we used to have that was very distinctive. And I, I'd like to have somebody talk about, about this, like why? Why do, why do we have to do this? What does it have to be this way? What is it have to be ugly and banal? So anybody on the council that chooses to address that, I would love to hear it. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other public comments?
We do not.
Okay. All right, so we'll go to council questions and comments now. Mr. Bowers, would you like to speak first?
I would love to, Mr. Mayor, if that would be okay with my colleagues. I just, I want to thank, I want to thank my colleagues and the staff. I remember when we put this on the agenda back in 2017, I, I got a little emotional talking about this project. And I, I am, I've moved from tears of excitement at the possibility of acquiring this property and doing permanent supportive housing project on it, to being at a place where we, we are in a position to have it. So on the whole, I just want to thank RCD for being a partner with our community and our city. I want to thank the staff for working on this, and I want to thank my colleagues for giving that direction three years ago. This is a great example of how getting behind something can really make a difference, and Measure C is going to help this as well. So I'm, I'm just really grateful to everyone for that. I have, I have a few pieces of feedback to the two questions that staff had. I'll start with the second one. I support all the waivers that have been requested, including the loading zone, the open space, the windows, the window distances in the courtyard, all, all the waivers I'm supportive of. There's only a few things that I would just offer as design suggestions to the team that's assembled here. The most important feature, as I said back in 2017, and I still believe today, is making an adequate home for Ecap. And I'm glad that you're in conversations with Ecap. I'm really happy to see a separated office space on the second floor. Please do not give that up. Please keep that, that's super necessary. As someone who volunteers at Ecap and meets with their board, I know that you're doing a lot of work also behind the scenes to help them with some of the managerial challenges that they have when they're serving as many people as they are. And that office space being designed and outfitted to meet their needs will be critical. The only ground floor concern I had with Ecap, and I would just ask, I'm in partnership, that you spend some more time with staff and that there be a real inventory done of how Ecap operates, is there are a lot of refrigerators that are used to store food. And those refrigerators are subject to a lot of health code regulations and their accessibility to members of the public. And I know you probably haven't built out the whole floor plan here, but there is no separated room for refrigeration kitchen storage. It's, it's a long room that looks a lot like a dining room. And I don't know between electrical and mechanical and some of the other stuff that's in the back there along the garage, what could be reconfigured potentially. But I just want to suggest that having something, a room that was a little more closer to a square or a triangle as opposed to a rectangle, might accommodate some of the features Ecap needs in order to have a movement of people, the flow of people in a kitchen setting and then serving them at a dining setting, just necessitates some actual geometry. Working in food kitchens for 20 years teaches you that. So I just want to put that out there as my first comment, and I'm happy to support any future dialogues you want to have on that. I support the public right-of-way being used for the stormwater treatment. And the other thing that was about Ecap that I just want to flag is vehicle storage. So I don't know if any of the spaces are dedicated to Ecap's vans. They use larger transit vans. They, they own three, I'm really happy to announce. Been helping them fundraise since November. We've raised enough money to replace their oldest van. But those vans are a little taller and they're a little longer. And so they, and they do all stay on-site. So I just want to flag for garage design and in particular movement in and out, we're, we're not talking about professional folks like West Management, we're talking about volunteers driving these vans. I just want to focus staff's attention around the day-to-day operations. It's easy to look at a nonprofit food, food kitchen and not see how some of those things play out. So I just want to flag those two items. A couple, the last couple other design items were, the courtyard faces almost completely east and is surrounded by five levels of podium housing. So I hope that the tree selection is, is capable of withstanding the very limited amount of sunlight that is going to come into that podium. I can point to other examples in Emeryville where there are east-only facing courtyards that the trees do not survive. And as a planning commissioner, that was a sticking point for me, so I just want to catch that. And then lastly, the bike room, two elements on the bike room. One, I saw the images and I didn't see, it was too hard to see up in detail, but there were some of those vertical racks, and I know that those were, Ally's on me, on me with this, I can see it. Vertical racks, especially for the type of population that will be in this building, people with pre-existing conditions, disabilities, other types of needs, those are very hard for people to lift. Women, seniors, people with disabilities cannot lift those. And so while I appreciate the number of racks, I think the accessibility of racks is actually the most important thing. I know, I think our design guidelines need to be updated around that, and I know Ally will probably have some more comments on it. But I just want to really reiterate that just because it's in our design code, I would ask staff to work with them on making sure that these are accessible units, especially given the population we're going to house. Last, last comment on the bike room is very well-protected, FOB-oriented bike rooms, even on second levels in private buildings in the Bay Area, are victimized for bike theft. Losing a bike as a low-income person is an extreme hardship. And so what I'd like to suggest, I saw where the doors were all located, I would just like to suggest that the entire side of the bike room should be a glass window and that the offices across the way should also be glass. There should be complete, like, eye contact between people who work in the building and the bike room as a way of protecting an asset that the residents have, so, so they're not ultimately keeping them in their units. Other than that, I have one question for staff, which was just at the crossing at 36th Street, is all of 36th Street situated in the city of Oakland? Navarre?
No, it's not.
So there's kind of that little split, and I just wonder for pedestrian, this isn't part of this project, but I just want to flag for staff that that triangle in the middle of the street, I think we should put a pedestrian island there to bridge pedestrian movement across what is otherwise a very wide street. I just flagged that for future discussion. Otherwise, I'm really happy and excited about this project, and I thank everyone from RCD for all the work on it. And if you can push up the percentage that's permanent supportive housing and go for a higher level of PSH, I know we talked about that and opportunities to do that and some state funding, I, I just am very supportive of any effort to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. Member Donahue, you hit your hand up, and then I will go to the other.
Yes, I'm supportive of all the waivers. Is the building all-electric? Meaning no natural gas, I assume?
This is Nick from RCD. So that is something that we're exploring. The, the project will definitely be Greenpoint rated gold. We have, we're experimenting with all-electric down in San Jose. We have a project under construction, and I think we would really like to make this an all-electric building in, in Emeryville. But it's something that we're continuing to kind of evaluate and explore, kind of just based on costs.
Yeah, for, for our city's future, I hope you can do that. And, you know, I understand this population and induction cooking might not be a natural in that most people are not familiar with it, but it is just so great and ultimately cost-effective. I just hope you can go there. And is it possible that the roof could be solar-ready?
Yes, it will be solar-ready.
Excellent.
Anything else, Member Donahue?
That's it.
Great, thank you. Member Medina?
Thank you. I'm also really excited about this project. I support all of the waivers. And I understand there's some tough trade-offs here with open space for affordable housing, but providing affordable housing is probably one of the best things we can do for our community right now. It's an absolute moral imperative, and so I'm really, really excited to see the project move forward. I'd like to echo Member Bowers' comments about the vertical bike racks. Those are quite cumbersome, even for myself, who's an able-bodied person who routinely pays money to lift things up her head, I find them to be kind of a pain. So I, you know, I would just say for most people, they're going to be an unpleasant deterrent experience. And I would also note that if we're putting the bike room on the second floor, is that correct?
Yes.
That if there's any steps leading up to it, we provide a ramp on the side of the steps, like a small groove. There's actually a good example of that by the Amtrak station now with that new platform to, that people can walk their bikes up on the groove of the step as they ascend. That's just a really easy way, and then you don't have to overcrowd elevators with bikes.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very excited about this project. I want to thank Member Bowers for really pointing us in this direction and encouraging this project. I do have some questions. I had asked staff about this earlier regarding EV chargers. And I did review the link at citiliftparking.com for the puzzle parking, but I'm still unclear on how an electric vehicle would get plugged in if it were parked in the stack parking. And I'm hoping someone would be able to answer that, either Nick or Ron.
Yeah, so I saw, it's still not clear which manufacturer we're going to use, but I did actually see a recent diagram from Parkmatic, and I believe the charger actually hangs above. It's like connected above the car, so as you drive in, it's hanging, you can connect to the car that way. But we can provide some information for you.
I'd love to get that information.
You tell that, yeah.
See how it's in action. I want to thank Member Bowers for bringing up the parking specifically for the Ecap vehicles. That's definitely something that they're going to need. They've got large vehicles, as you said, that they park on-site, and we want to make sure that they're accommodated in that way. And then finally, I'm glad, I believe it was Ron, that you brought up the connectivity between the offices on the second floor and the Ecap retail space on the first floor. I want to make sure, you know, I'm very appreciative that those offices are being designed with them in mind, and I want to make sure that there's connectivity and they work for the purposes that they need them for, so that they don't have to go all the way around the building to get into their own offices, or if whoever's working in management has to come all the way around and possibly go outside to manage the staff that's on the floor. And then finally, I, I just want to make sure, you know, I, I don't know what the parameters are for this, but I did see in one of the examples for bike parking that you, there's a plan on possibly accommodating larger cargo bikes. And I want to make sure, you know, as Ally had mentioned about being able to get the bikes up the stairs, that if there's a freight elevator, that people are actually able to fit a cargo bike or a larger-sized bike into the elevators, because I think that would be very important. And with that, I, I'm very excited about this project. I don't object to any of the waivers, and I'm very excited to see us move forward.
Great, thank you. All right, so I won't take too long to sort of just echo what all my colleagues have said. I think this is a great project going forward. I too am supportive of all but one of the waivers. I have a whole thing on the unit mix, but I don't think it's going to matter my opinion on that, so I won't bore you with it. And with that, I think we are all set. Navarre, did you get your questions answered?
I, I believe so. Did you want me to address any of the items that you brought up, such as the vertical bike racks or space in the street or anything like that?
If you have it, that'd be wonderful.
Okay. Also, I just wanted to make a quick correction that the, I said in the staff report that we have 60 days to review the project, but it's actually 90 because design review is involved. So comments aren't due to the applicant until after the planning commission's second meeting. So I just wanted to correct that really quickly. In terms of the vertical bike racks, just so you know, the proportion that's proposed, it's 14 out of 93 spaces that are proposed to be verticals. So I, I hear what you're saying, just want to let you know it's not the majority of the spaces. And I'll double-check what's going on with elevators and the cargo bike spacing on that. And then the V-shaped portion of the street on 36th is in Oakland. So part of 36th is Oakland, part of it's Emeryville. Staff took a very deep dive, looking very closely at what could and could not be modified at that intersection to try and make sure that it can make it as safe as possible for, for pedestrians there, particularly because there's this high, such high-traffic volumes there, and whatever we could do to reduce pedestrian conflicts. However, that was not an option, but the, the landscaping buffer is, so.
Member Bowers has a follow-up question?
Yeah, Navarre is, oh, sorry, is, I have my headphones in, I'm using my phone. The 36th Street section where a triangle would go, is that Oakland or Caltrans? Can you all hear me?
We can hear you. Navarre's on mute, so we'll give Navarre a second to come back.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you for saying that. I, I don't want to state for sure, but it's definitely out of our jurisdiction.
Okay.
It looks like Charlie would like to address that, so. Mr. Bryant?
Thank you, Mayor Pats. We checked the Caltrans right-of-way maps, and were surprised to find that 36th Street actually is not Caltrans right-of-way. I believe it's San Pablo is, but so the line of the Caltrans right-of-way, as I recall, kind of extends straight down along the San Pablo Avenue frontage of the proposed project site. So then as you go east on 36th Street, you're not in Caltrans right-of-way. So it's, the north half of 36th Street is Emeryville, including the curb and the sidewalk, and the south half is Oakland.
Okay, thank you. Member Donahue?
One more comment about that intersection. I'm pleased to see the design extending the sidewalk out a greater distance, making the crossing not as far. But I also will say that we've had a cyclist killed at that intersection years ago, and the road gets pinched down as it goes from Oakland to Emeryville. And this is an ongoing problem, and we need to work with the city of Oakland on the graphics on the street and on that triangle. I, I think it's really important that we don't let that slip through the cracks.
Navarre, did you have anything else to add to the conversation?
I don't believe so at this point, although I do believe there are some requirements now per building code that, about, about solar for all new residential units. So the question about being solar-ready, I believe the applicant had.
So thank you for that excellent job there, people. I think that went really well. We are done with this item, and so that's going to lead us to adjourn the study session. It is 7:32. I will adjourn. We will take about three or four minutes before we adjourn, before we begin our next meeting, just so people can take care of their needs. Good, thank you.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I believe I got the high sign from Dave, so we can go ahead and call to order.
Okay, it's 7:37, September 1st. This is the Management of Emeryville Services Authority Meeting. And, uh, should we do a roll call, Sherry?
Uh, yes, and, um, I don't think, well, we should probably read the, uh, the statement as well. Sorry, it's been a while since we read it. I'll start with the roll call. Councilmember Bowers?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Here.
And Mayor Pats?
Right, and I'll do the introductory remarks really quickly. I would like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided under the Governor's Executive Order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall has closed the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27, and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at www.emeriville.org and clicking "Council Agendas and Videos." Once there, you will see a link entitled "Submit an Online Speaker Card." The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comments during the meeting using the "Raise Your Hand" feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as via e-notification. Okay, with that, uh, can I have a motion for final approval of the agenda?
I move the agenda.
I have a motion from Member Donahue, a second by Member Bowers.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye, okay. At this point, I will take public comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda. Do we have any comment cards?
No comment cards and no raised hands at this time.
Excellent. Do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
I have a motion for Member Donahue, a second for Member Medina.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. That is the only thing on our agenda this evening, and so at 7:40, I adjourn this meeting. Okay. All right, it is, Sherry, are you ready?
Uh, one moment, please. Lot of screens to change.
No worries.
Okay, go.
All right, it is 7:40 still. I call to order the successor agency regular meeting. Uh, we can skip roll calls, we are all still here. Do I have a motion for the final agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for Member Bowers, a second for Member Donahue.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Any ex parte communication? Seeing none, we'll take public comment at this time.
No speaker cards and no raised hands.
Excellent. Do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
I move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
I have a motion for Member Donahue, a second for Member Medina.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, that is the only item on our agenda this evening. Therefore, at 7:41, the one-minute meeting took one minute. We are adjourned. Okay, that brings us to the next meeting, and I'll wait for you to tell me you're ready.
Okay, I am ready.
Okay, it is 7:42 on September 1st, 2020. Calling to order the regular City Council meeting. And since I just read the script, I'm going to skip that. Do I have, um, do we, do not need to do attendance, we're all here. So do I have a motion for the final agenda?
Oh.
Mayor?
Yep.
If, if we could request that the agenda be reordered to have the planning director's report precede the public students, that would be appreciated.
You know, I got too many things in the meeting. Yeah, I'm going to make that, the motion with that change, moving the planner-director report up. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, I have a motion and a second. With that change, vote please.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Apologies, I was moving ahead one item. Okay, council members, special announcements, reports on meetings attended.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, clerk vacant, oh, sorry. I jumped down, I'm all over the place here, I apologize. Let me slow down. We have a special order of the day. I know we have been skipping these and moving through our agendas because it's difficult to do on Zoom, but this was the rare occasion where something had happened that is just not likely to happen, um, again. And so we are going to take a moment and, uh, recognize Joseph C. Melinkon's lifetime of service to the Emeryville community. So, whereas Joseph, uh, C. Melinkon grew up in the East Bay, graduated from Richmond High School, earned his bachelor's degree and teaching credential from San Francisco State University, Go Gators, then was subsequently hired as a fifth-grade teacher at Ralph Hawley School in 1969, and whereas he served the school district full-time for 35 years as a fourth, fifth, and sixth-grade teacher at Ralph Hawley and Annie Yates Elementary, Annie Yates principal in 92 to 94, then served as a ninth and 10th grade math, English, PE teacher at Emory Secondary, and was a grant writer and coordinator for various extracurricular projects designed to benefit at-risk youth. And whereas in 1995, Joseph was hired by the City of Emeryville in recognition, uh, I'm sorry, the Recreation Department, and became known as Nature Boy, as he started a team program that included overnight camping trips, something few participants in the program had ever experienced. And whereas over the course of the next 25 years, Joe would continue to work with Emeryville youth and also serve in many other capacities, including at the senior center trips and events coordinator, bus driver, crossing guard, and he played Santa Claus at many Emory holiday events. And whereas, whereas upon retiring from EUSD in 2004, he continued to serve as a go-to substitute teacher through 2020, and whereas Joe continued to work in the after-school program through 2019 and was regularly recognized fondly by his former students who had now had their own children in the program, now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of Emeryville and this, uh, hereby recognizes Joseph C. Melinkon for his 50 years of service to the Emory United School District and 25 years of service to the city of Emeryville, where his contributions have had a positive effect on generations of Emeryville community, for which we give our profound thanks, adopted by the City Council of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. Hard to pass up 50 years, that is just incredible. Um, and so, I believe...
He is not on the call, but I believe he's watching online to hear. You read that aloud, so, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. I cannot express, I, I can't imagine, um, 50 years of service to the town of Emeryville, um, that predates many of us on this council, and so that is incredible. Uh, and that is what I was thinking about when I should have been looking at my agenda and script. I am just, as somebody who's worked in education for 20 years, I can't imagine 30 more. That is just incredible. All right, um, I have now, we are now on to a commission, uh, committee vacancies.
Can I say something?
Please, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I, I just, um, I, if Mr. Melinkon, if you're watching from home or watching another time, I just want to express, um, just how you've touched my own personal family. Uh, my, my children miss your face and, um, have said, uh, told me stories about you basically every day for the past three or four years. Um, and my anecdote about Mr. Melinkon is, um, he was substituting for my younger child's class. Uh, he was scheduled to do so, and the day before he did it, he turned to me and my child and he said, "I'm going to bring in vomit tomorrow, and you're going to like it." Um, and it was honey. So, uh, he's got away with the kids and with the adults, and, um, he's just such a great addition to our community, and we're, we're also grateful to have him, and I'm glad you spilled the beans about Santa, because I, I don't think there are any children tuned in right now. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You know, thank you, that was wonderful and, and made this so much more, uh, important. So, thank you. Thank you, everybody. And now I will go on to announcement of commission vacancies.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight, I only have that same vacancy to announce. It's on the Budget Advisory Committee, and it's for a business representative. It's currently, since it's our only vacancy, we don't have any, uh, plan for, uh, recruitment, but please, um, speak to your contacts. If you know anybody who fits that description and would like to apply, please encourage them to apply online. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, uh, announcements of meetings attended. Councilmembers, Member Donahue, and then Member Bowers.
I was at a, uh, a Zoom meeting for a League of Cities East Bay meeting at a presentation where a UC Berkeley academic, Stephen Menenden, did a presentation about racism. And, uh, the, uh, a short statement he made was, "One-third of racism is actual discrimination. Two-thirds is structural racism, mostly to do with housing." And, uh, I asked him, uh, if the difference between multifamily housing that is condoized versus rental and that transition, did he have any data about that? In other words, if times change, which they might, and a lot of our rental housing is sold off as condos, will we be creating further structural racism because of the mortgage environment? And he said he could provide data about that to our city, and he's going to work on that.
Thank you. Okay, Member Bowers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I look forward to seeing the, that data, uh, Councilmember Donahue. Um, my, my announcement is I'd like my council colleagues to join me in congratulating Mayor Pats. Um, Mayor Pats will be, the Oakland Pride, um, festival is virtual this year, but, um, Mayor Pats will be receiving the solidarity award for his work as a cisgender heterosexual white male on behalf of, uh, a former teacher, a Teacher of the Year, who was transgender, um, Steve Dain at Emory Unified, and for his years, um, advocating to, um, right a wrong for Steve Dain and his family, um, while at Emory Unified, and then again as, uh, Mayor of our city. Um, he was, uh, selected to be one of the award recipients, and so I just wanted to give him that shout-out.
Thank you.
And you can attend the virtual event on September 13th at 11:00 AM. I almost missed.
And, uh, you know, I, Member Bowers is a very active member of that, and I appreciate his support and his work. Um, and, uh, there's going to be a statue of Marsha P. Johnson in New Jersey, and so I'm just going to say that even what we have done, there's more work to be done, and that excites me. Uh, and I will follow that up as getting, I'm sorry, uh, Member Medina, Member, Vice Mayor Martinez, do you have anything before I talk about mine? Member Medina?
Oh, yeah, I had distinct pleasure attending the Gilman Field JPA, uh, last week. They still had it in August, don't worry, team. I was there. Uh, it lasted like three hours. Uh, and the, my main takeaway for you guys is that kids can now play, I think so, um, kids can play on the field in the evenings, but they have to pay the adult rate, which I actually objected to.
Oh, where's the mute button? Hold on, hold on, where's the mute button? Go ahead.
Um, but yeah, so now, like, youth soccer teams can play on the fields at night, but only to pay the full price for the adult price to pay for the lights being turned on. I objected because we're overpaying for these lights anyway, and I felt it was like an equity issue, like, what if there's a poor youth team that couldn't afford to be on the, the field at night, and, you know, kids aren't getting outside anymore. Um, I was overruled by the JPA, which is normal, so, okay.
Thank you.
I want to now, I want to nominate her for an award, I just don't know what it is yet, sorry.
Uh, Vice Mayor, anything?
No, Mayor, I just want to join in and, um, congratulating you and the honor that you're about to receive. I will be there, watching from my Zoom screen, and, um, in honor of the only award you will receive where it recognizes your cisgenderhood, your hetero-hood, and your white malehood.
I get awards for that all the time. That, 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 that come, that brings its whole trophy case. Uh, we like our participation awards. Um, and so with that, I think it's only appropriate that I tell you guys that there, that I have been derelict in my duties as your mayor. I get invited to participate in the federal conference calls, and I went to the first one, and I, I get the invitations, and I look at them, and I know I should go, but the invitation always reads, "We want to talk..." but the invitation always reads, "We want to talk about the amazing work that President Trump is doing in response to the current health crisis." And I've participated and I just can't do it anymore. So I read the notes afterwards, but I felt obliged to tell you that I am skipping out on those meetings that talk about how wonderful of a job our president is doing in his response to all of this. I felt, I feel like I can get that guilt off my chest now. All right. City Managers report. Good luck following all of that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't even try. No report, nothing to report other than just continued appreciation.
Excellent. Thank you. Ex parte communications for items on the agenda. Bear with me one moment. I have...
I have one too.
Go ahead. Do yours while I'm...
Item 11.2, had conversations with several residents from Loop 22.
Excellent. I have the same one and I have spoken with the applicant. Okay. And with that, we move to public comment. And I think I should read this statement. "It has been awhile. Now is the time for public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted their speaker online card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please raise your hand using the feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card." I do see a hand raised.
No online comment cards, but yes, the hand is raised for last four digits, 1281.
Okay. When you're ready, let's go ahead and take that.
Go ahead, please.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, as you all are aware, Sherwin-Williams project is moving forward, being done by Lennar Development Corporation. So, they have been violating the Alameda County COVID mask orders. And their workers there are, many of them are not wearing masks and they're working shoulder to shoulder within six feet of each other. So I've been calling to complain to the, the person that, that is supposed to take the phone calls to receive citizen complaints. His name is Ryan somebody. And it's posted as they are contractually required to do, his number is posted on Sherwin Street and on Horton Street. But the, but that man does not pick up the phone, nor does he return calls. So I finally gave up with that. So that's a violation you should be aware of, that they're not doing that properly. So I instead now, I'm, I'm calling the, the city manager to complain, to make complaints about Sherwin-Williams. Since Sherwin-Williams doesn't do its due diligence vis a vis the phone line, the complaint line. So I've been calling Christine Daniel and then I, then I also decided to contact the mayor, Christian Pats, via email to let him know about these violates, continuing violations of, about no masks. Then the mayor, in by email, dressed me down and he, you know, he excoriated me and he told me that this is not the city's responsibility. But he's, I'm here to announce that it is the city's, city's responsibility. And the fact the mayor doesn't know it is disconcerting to me. The mayor, any mayor should know that, that what the duties of, of his city are. And so I hope the mayor comes to terms with this. Moving forward, I've been complaining and nothing's been happening. They're continuing to work without masks. And then I, I did a service, a request for service of the planning department because the planning department wasn't believing me, or the, I should say, the, just the city, city hall in general. And instead, they appeared to be believing me, Lennar, when they were denying it. And all the time, Lennar's been denying it. They've been saying that they haven't worn their masks. So I threatened to get an SLR camera with a telephoto lens so I could photo document, but I also mentioned that I would sue the city if I had to. So as soon as I said that, then the planning department, building, building department put a inspector out there today. And here's what the, the building, their building, is that the, the city employee said to Charlie Bryant, the planning director, he said, "I witnessed 12 individuals without masks on." This is from today at Sherwood. Four of these individuals, individuals were within six feet of one another. Okay. So now with just a few minutes that the, the building inspector was at the site. So I've been...
That's your time.
Right. All right. At this point, we have no further public comment. I'll take my point of personal privilege and respond with what I think is the appropriate response. And so do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
I move the consent calendar.
And do I have a second? I have a motion and a second for the consent calendar. Roll call vote. Please, Sherry.
Councilmember Vouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay. That brings us to item 11, Public Hearings. Oh, wait, we...
13.1 Department Heads.
Planning Directors Report. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Charlie Bryant.
Mayor Pats and members of the City Council, this is my regular report to you on the last planning commission meeting, which was last Thursday, August 27th. I would note that all seven planning commissioners were in attendance at that meeting and the items on their agenda are listed on your agenda. First, they had a public hearing on the Emeryville Center for the Arts. This was consideration of a conditional use permit and design review permit. It also included a tree removal permit for six street trees on Hollis Street and one street tree on 40th Street. I realize the agenda says four trees on 40th Street. The plans, however, were later revised so that only one tree on 40th Street is being removed. I would note that the applicant is replacing all seven of the street trees that are being removed. The, after holding the public hearing, the planning commission unanimously approved this application on a seven to nothing vote, and they made no changes to the conditions of approval as recommended by staff. This approval is appealable to the City Council within 15 days. That is by next Friday, September 11th. And of course, if the council wishes to appeal this project to yourselves, this is your opportunity to do that. The second item was a study session on the Biomed Emeryville Center of Innovation, which is the buildout of the Novartis portion of the Chiron PUD. They had a very lengthy discussion about this project. They seem to be generally pleased with the direction that it is going. And it is intended that this will come back to the commission for a consideration of approval either at the end of this year or early next year. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Member Vouters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question regarding the set of applications that go to the Art Center. Obviously, I'm a huge proponent of doing the Art Center and I do not want to delay the Art Center. But given that there's a series of permits, I'm wondering if they can be disjointed from one another insofar as to only appeal the tree removal permit? Is that possible?
Um, I think they're pretty integrally connected because part of the commission's approval was vis a vis the pedestrian priority overlay zone. And this was part of the use permit and design review approval that is implemented through the design guidelines for the pedestrian priority overlay zone, which in turn is reflected by that designation in the general plan. And so the tree removal permit is tied to the redesign of the sidewalk on Hollis Street, which is to conform to the general plan and the pedestrian priority overlay zone. And therefore, it's integrally connected with the design review and conditional use permit approval. And I believe the city attorney would like to embellish?
It's also just all in one resolution. And so it would all be appealed.
Yeah. So, yeah. So I'll just express my unhappiness. I'm not gonna hold the center up, but I just think the public should be aware that councilmembers had concerns with six juniper trees being removed. We made this clear through numerous parts of the process. And so for the tree, if, if, if that direction necessarily in the future has to be tied to all these things, I think that should come before the council separately in advance because it forces us to take an all or nothing approach. Whereas I have no issues with the design, the applicant, any of the other things that are being proposed. I don't believe I'm alone. I think a number of us have expressed interest in trying to preserve trees that are not common in the city. And I hate to say I'm going to relent and, and go along with that because I understand the cost implications and the timeline implications for the city. But I would just ask the planning director and the city attorney's office in the future to work with the city manager on how, if there is an element to approval that requires its own separate permit, even if those are necessarily intertwined for the purposes of the final resolution, those should have been sequenced out for the city council to make independent decisions because I would be voting no on the tree removal permit today if I had the ability to cast a vote for my conscience on that alone. Thank you.
Member Medina?
I'd like to fully echo what Member Vouters had said. I think he summed it up pretty well. I, I feel the exact same way about the project, really in support of it. Don't want to hold it up, but I am loath to see there's trees pulled out for, in what my, in my, in my opinion, is insufficient reason.
Okay. Member Martinez, Member Donahue? Okay. I would just echo that I feel the same way about the trees. So if we had a motion to appeal, he would probably get three votes. And I think the, the challenge is just that we want to see this project done. So, all right.
Excuse me, Mayor Pats. I don't know if you see the, there is a raised hand. I'm presuming they would like to make a public comment.
Uh, just because this is an appealable thing, yeah. Let's go ahead and take the public comment.
Go ahead, please.
Just because it's appealable, but not because the city of Emeryville encourages the citizens to engage in their government. Okay. I would, it's, it's, I'm happy to see, I almost said Congresswoman. I'm sorry. Councilmember Medina, change your mind about trees. That's, looks like we're moving forward in that category. We all recall when Lennar told the, told the people that we couldn't save any of the trees at the Sherwin-Williams project and Councilwoman Medina just couldn't imagine that Lennar might be lying. Like a corporate, big corporation might be not telling us the truth. And so she said she was with a heavy heart and blah, blah, blah. And then she voted to let the trees be killed. So, you know, the trees are gonna be killed now at the Art Center. Again, this is the same fact, but at least ahead of time, you're not just assuming, you know, you're assuming, it seems like your, your opinion on trees has changed. And so I appreciate that. These are our trees and I'm, I'm, I'm happy you seem to be deciding that they are valuable things now, after all. So, and then I wanted to thank Charlie Bryant, the planning director, who just made the presentation on this topic for, for deciding to check, to see the, check the veracity of my claims about the, the lack of masks wearing among the workers at the Sherwin-Williams site. He checked it and found out that in fact, I'm, I'm telling the truth. They, they are violating it. And so I'd like to thank Charlie Bryant for, Bryant for doing something sort of unusual, but it's believing a citizen complaint instead of a big corporation, which is what the normal Emeryville thing to do. So it seems like we're moving forward in baby steps. And so I appreciate that. I appreciate Mr. Bryant, like I said, checking that out and finding out that in fact, that they are, that corporation Lennar is in fact lying to us when they say that they, their, their workers are wearing masks. So I appreciate that, Charlie. And that's all I wanted to say on this topic. Thank you.
This is to 11.1, City Public Hearing for the Art Center project. Do we have?
I believe it's Chad Smalley. Do we have Mr. Smalley?
Yes. Yes. Let me do a quick sound check here. Can you all hear me?
You could be a little louder.
Little louder yet? Okay. How about that?
Good.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. This is Chad Smalley, Economic Development and Housing Manager, here to present to you this evening the lease disposition development agreement and a construction monitoring contract for the Emeryville Art Center. I'll give a moment for Sherry to load the presentation. All right. Let's go ahead to the next slide. Thanks, Sherry. So, this, I'm very happy to be presenting this today at this stage of the project because this project goes back a long time. So by way of background, back in March of 2006, the redevelopment agency bought the property at 4060 Hollis. It used to be a stamping company. It's about a 30,000 square foot, single-story brick building located right behind City Hall, just south of City Hall. And then in December of 2010, the redevelopment agency executed an exclusive right to negotiate with the Emeryville Center for the Arts, which was a nonprofit formed to advance the project to bring an art center to that location. In September of 2011, the planning commission approved a use permit and design review for adaptive reuse of that building. But then in February of 2012, the state dissolved all redevelopment agencies statewide, putting the project on hold. Next slide, please.
Nope, it went to sleep. Sorry. Here we go.
So this is the property that I mentioned, right behind City Hall, 30,000 square feet. Next slide, please. So in September of 2017, after much administrative exercise in the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, the property was transferred to the city pursuant to the long-range property management plan from the redevelopment agency. In January of 2018, the council held a study session and gave staff direction to proceed with a public-private partnership model to advance this project and restart the Art Center project and to release a request for qualifications and proposals to find a, a private sector partner. In February of 2018, that RFQP was released. In April of 18, the responses came in. And in September of that year, the city council selected Orton Development Incorporated, or ODI. In November of 2018, the city council authorized exclusion, execution of an exclusive right to negotiate with ODI. Next slide, please. So during the term of the ERN, we continued to negotiate a lease disposition development agreement. And in February of 2019, the planning commission held their first study session reviewing the project. In May of 2020, a second study session was held. And then, as you just heard in your report from Mr. Bryant, the planning commission approved the use permit and design review and associated entitlements for the project last week. And during that time, we've negotiated and concluded on an LDDA or a lease disposition development agreement and ground lease for the project. During the same time, we procured the services of a construction monitoring firm and negotiated a contract for that. And, and that will be the second of two actions that we ask you to take regarding this project tonight. And so I'll go into each of those in turn. Next slide, please. So first, I'm going to go over the LDDA and the ground lease and the project briefly, and then I'll turn to the construction manager, monitoring contract. So as I mentioned, the project involves the adaptive reuse of the existing 30,000 square foot United Stamp and Company building. The project will include 13,000 square feet of flexible gallery and multipurpose visual slash performing arts space and 17 artist studios, which total combined are about 10,000 square feet. The project includes 4,500 square feet of office co-working space and a 2,400 square foot cafe. Next slide, please. This slide depicts, it's difficult to read, but it's color-coded. This slide depicts the, the areas I just described. The light blue is the area for the forum and the multipurpose gallery. The purple areas are the studios. The green area is the offices and the pink and orange areas are the cafe. Next slide, please. This is the site plan to orient to. The civic center is, and the north direction is to... The civic center is, and the north direction is to the left of the screen. And this sits beside the parking lot, and 40th Street is on the right-hand side. Hollis Street is on the bottom of the screen. Next slide, please. This shows the elevation from Hollis Street, and you can see the, on the far left of this elevation, at the top of the screen would be the cafe space and studios line, in the main entry to the, to the center, the studios line the building along 40th. Next slide, please. The elevation from 40th Street includes reconstruction of the existing steel, corrugated steel portion of the building with what's been termed a jewel box. This is a glass area that will be used for arts display. And to the right of this elevation, you can see a loading ramp that comes down to the double doors on this elevation. Next slide, please. And then from the parking lot, you'll see that the building includes some reconstruction of portions of the facade that faces the parking lot with panelized construction. And there's a new entry from the parking lot and an accessible ramp constructed along this side. Next slide, please. Then finally, from the north is a green wall. The existing fountain is to the left there, and you can see sort of the cafe space addition to the right side of this elevation. Next slide, please. We have a couple of renderings. This one is showing the main entrance from Hollis and the cafe and office space. Next slide, please. And this is the jewel box I mentioned earlier. And notable as part of the planning commission comments includes a decomposed granite pathway to allow folks to engage with this area and to get a close view of the artworks that will be put on display in this, in the space. Next slide, please. So I'll go through now the terms of both the LDDA and the ground lease. And the two documents are interrelated. The ground lease is an exhibit to the LDDA, and so I'll, this will be a fluid conversation as I go between the two documents. The LDDA term commences upon execution. This is going to be done by ordinance. And so after second reading and the ordinance becomes effective 30 days later, the LDDA can be executed and that term commences. And it ends one year from the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the improvements that we just reviewed in those drawings. The ground lease commences when it is executed, and it can only be executed after satisfaction of a number of conditions precedent to lease close, which I will go into in a moment. The initial term on the lease is 34 years, and there are three 10-year options for a total of 64 years. Government Code Section 37380 requires that for leases between cities and other parties between 55 and 99 years, that those be adopted by ordinance. And so that is why it's presented to you in the way we have this evening as an ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance. Next slide, please. So the conditions precedent to lease close, these are all the things that ODI has to accomplish before we will execute that lease. First, they have to obtain all the discretionary approvals. Now, as I mentioned, that's nearly been accomplished. As soon as the appeal period runs, as mentioned by Mr. Bryant, this condition is satisfied. They need to submit a financing plan, an operating pro forma, that shows both how they'll finance the construction as well as how the prospective operations, revenues and costs will, are anticipated to work. A gallery operator, which is a nonprofit organization, will be established, and agreements between the gallery operator and ODI as the landlord will need to be submitted for the city's review. An arts management plan and a community outreach plan, both relating to what is going to occur in the building and what kind of community outreach will be involved, will be, is required to be submitted. And then final construction plans are submitted to the city for its review outside of the building permit process, just as proprietary interest. And then they must submit for their building permit plan check, all of the plans, and be issue ready for just the interior demo, shoring, repointing, and abatement. And once that's accomplished, that condition is satisfied. Next slide, please. In addition, they must submit the construction contract for the project and the bonds associated with that, the insurance certificates. They have to execute an assignment of plans and other documents to assign those plans to the city and execute a construction staging license, which will allow for access around the structure on the parking lot and on the city hall parcel so that they can build the project, receive any other approvals involved, and then agree to the form of an access and parking operations license, which will govern the ongoing and permanent access to the building across city properties. And then finally, submit a letter of intent from a tenant to lease the cafe and 30% of the studio spaces. Next slide, please. So once all those things happen, the lease can close. Now, the way this is being funded is 12.9 million is the maximum project cost by virtue of the way the agreement is arranged. Plus $1 million means a total project cost of 13.9 million dollars. 10.8 million of that is coming from the city, and 3.1 is coming from developer equity. The million-dollar operating fund, which I'll get to a little later, is coming from the city funds. The 3.1 in developer equity is a maximum figure. It's subject to 8% return, which will be paid by project revenues, which again I'll get into later. There's a developer fee on the project that's arranged to incentivize efficient completion of the project. If the costs are greater than $9,604,000, the developer fee is $196,000. If the costs are equal to or less than that number, the figure is, in the typo on the slide, is $196,000 plus 10% of the difference between the total cost and $9,604,000. Next slide, please. So for rents, annually, rents that are collected from the users of the space, which will include, in certain circumstances, the gallery operator, the tenants of the studios, the tenants of the office and co-working space, and the cafe tenant, are all collected and put into a pot, and they go through this waterfall. First, those rents will go, after paying the operating costs of the project, will go to pay any outstanding developer fee that may be owed. Second, to return, they'll repay the 8% return on the outstanding developer equity. Third, they go to return the equity itself. And then fourth, to cover any losses from the nonprofit gallery operator in the event that they're unable to cover their losses. This last portion happens only after the rent abatement. In other words, the gallery operator won't pay rent if they can't. The city's share of funds, half of the revenue, is used first to cover those gallery operator costs. And then if those funds are insufficient, the, and the gallery operator goes to the first position in the waterfall, and they're made whole before anyone gets paid from these rents. If there's funds left afterwards, the funds are split between city and Orton 50/50. The gallery operator's rent is limited by the agreement, by the ground lease. Yeah, it's $6 per square foot per year triple net, escalated with a CPI escalator, and that is substantially below market rates in this area. Next slide, please. The ground lease goes on, and it has use requirements, and this is where it enforces what happened in the space. Two-thirds of the square footage of the building is reserved for arts uses, and those arts uses are defined by the lease. The celebration of the arts furthermore is required to, ODI is required to give them seven weeks at no charge. The city also can get 10 days per year, four of which can be weekend days, also at no charge for its own use, except for any extraordinary catering or equipment or setup costs. The developers are required to fund a maintenance reserve of $1.20 per square foot per year, also escalated with a CPI. And then any future improvements and alterations that are in excess of $25,000 are subject to the city's prior approval and reviews similar to the initial construction project. Next slide, please. So construction in the future, the review process is, for the initial construction, is addressed in the LDDA and all of the requirements for them to submit plans, their contracts, and all of their agreements. Any major additional improvements are addressed in this ground lease. Those are things that are potentially out in the future. And I mentioned the reserves of $1.20 square foot annually, escalated with CPI. Any maintenance that's in excess of the reserves that have been accumulated in the event something happens out there that needs to be repaired, that's more than that, are funded by developer equity. And that equity is subject to a 4% or a lesser rate of return. Next slide, please. And before I go on to this, the reason I describe all of that to kind of summarize it, because I realize it's complex, is that the way this project is arranged is as a blend of commercial and arts uses. And it's the commercial uses that enable the project to function fiscally and sustainably. The entire agreement is arranged to insulate the city from operating costs that could be incurred in the future if the, if the center doesn't perform well. And it is meant to be a balanced approach to getting the civic uses that we want of there without introducing the risk, long-term risk, to the city of having to pay for operating costs for an art center. And so that is the reason for the arrangement I just described. The lease explains provisions for transfer by ODI to another entity. Within five years, the first five years of the lease, there is no transfer allowed except if due to death or incapacity. And of course, the subleases to the end users, the studio users, the cafe, folks like that, those are allowed. Without, outside of five years of the lease, those transfers are subject to city approval and there are requirements spelled out in the lease agreement, more than five years of experience with similar developments and a network worth equal or greater than ODI at that point in time, no negative impact to the city's share of net revenues through the waterfall I just described, and the developer will forfeit any outstanding equity that is owed to them upon transfer if any is owed at that time. And ultimately, it's up to the city's review and approval of any transfer. Next slide, please. And so that is in, is a broad overview of the LDDA and ground lease. Now, should the city council want to move forward with this, we, the staff would request that we also take the second action, which is to execute a contract with a construction monitoring firm to take care of the city's interests during construction and monitor what's going on, negotiate change orders, review pay applications, and items like that. So, excuse me. So in 2019, staff circulated a request for qualifications for various disciplines for projects that we knew were on the horizon, and we included the art center in that RFQ, that omnibus RFQ, and we included construction monitoring because we knew this was something that we would need. The top rated respondent to that RFQ was Max Craig, doing business as MAC5. So MAC5 was engaged by the city for construction estimating scope and is performing that work now in reviewing the estimates versus the plans that are in development and being submitted shortly for building permit. The construction monitoring scope, as I mentioned, involves weekly visits and participation in the progress meetings, monitoring the contractor's progress, reviewing the pay applications, the draw requests, and we expect the construction period to take 18 months. The cost of this contract would be $144,000. Next slide, please. So, the next steps, and where we're going from here, is today, where tonight, we're reviewing, you know, this first reading of the ordinance allowing the execution of the LDDA and ground lease. The second reading, should you adopt that ordinance, would be on September 15th, and then that ordinance becomes effective on October 15th. By that point in time, provided no appeals been filed on the entitlements, the city manager would be authorized to execute the LDDA. And then the developer will satisfy the conditions precedent to lease close that I outlined earlier. Once that lease is executed and the building permit is issue ready and received, we're expecting 15 to 18 months of construction. Next slide, please. So that concludes my presentation. I know that David Dial and Max Raden from Orton are on the line if you have any questions specifically for them. Otherwise, I'll entertain any questions you may have for me.
Great, thank you. We'll do clarifying questions before we open the public hearing, so do any members of the council have any clarifying questions? Member Donahue?
David Dial, would you consider making this project all-electric and not having natural gas as a part of it?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Donahue. We've, we have considered that and looked very, we took a very hard look at that and determined that it wasn't financially feasible for this project, and primarily because of the cafe space. We weren't sure that we would be able to attract the kind of restaurateur we anticipate for the space if we did not have gas. So that drove a number of decisions after that.
Could I suggest that you only do the cafe space then, that the rest of the building be all-electric?
Happy to take that back to our design team.
Okay, thank you.
Other clarifying questions? Okay, I see the time is 8:30, so I will open the public hearing at 8:30 and take public comment at this time. I see a hand raised. And do we have any comment cards, Sherry?
No comment cards, so I will, last four digits, 1281. Go ahead.
Insofar as the cafe will help to make or break this center, and I believe it would. A successful cafe there would, would really help. Insofar that that is true, you need to get it in writing that there will be a tenant. I can't tell you how many times we've been told cafes are going to be located in ground floor retail space and then had it not happen for various reasons. And the city of Emeryville has never gotten any of these in writing. They've always gotten assurances from every developer that there will be a restaurant space there or a cafe. But the assurances have a funny way of not happening, you know, as everybody knows, unless you're under oath, it's legal to lie. And again, this, this council seems to have a hard time understanding that developers will lie. I mean, it happens all the time, but you guys have a really tough time of just imagining And it's really astounding because, you know, you've been lied to so many times by developers, and it just seems like, you know, at what point do you start to finally just say, okay, that, you know, they may not be telling us the truth? So I think you need to get this in writing, this cafe, and with a guarantee, so the developer will absorb the cost of the rent, or the city will absorb the cost of the rent, I guess, if we have to, or whatever. The cost of rent will be absorbed until a suitable tenant is obtained for the cafe space. And then that has to be made sure that that's for imperperity. Yeah, that's it. That's how you get the cafe space rented. That's all, that's my entire comment.
Okay, seeing no other raised hands or having any other comments, I have it at 8:32, and I will close the public hearing. Before we go to read by title only, I'll open it up to member comments. Seeing, oh, go ahead, member Bowers.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Orton for all their work on this project that began as a public-private partnership endeavor for the city to undertake in 2018, that we selected them at the end of that year. And so to be here less than 24 months later with, you know, an agreement in place to get the art center under construction is a very successful and monumental thing for the city and its identity as an arts community. You know, but I would just say to the, to the comments about the usable space, you know, there's, there's incentives for them to, to find somebody to rent this space between maintenance funds. maintenance funds and other and other, you know, material material obligations they have in the in the contract. I think it's fair to say that it would be a disincentive for them, unlike perhaps other buildings I know that the public commenter is referring to, to leave this space vacant. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to move to read by title only.
Okay, any other comments before I look for a second? All right, then I'll look for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to read by title only.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye, okay, title only, please.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into and execute a lease disposition and development agreement between the city of Emeryville and Forty-Sixty Hollis LLC and related ground lease for the development and operation of an art center at Forty-Sixty Hollis Street, Emeryville, California, APN zero four nine zero six one eight and zero zero four, and authorizing the city manager to take action to effectuate the lease disposition, development agreement, and related ground lease. Sequo status exempt pursuant to state sequel guidelines, sections one five three oh one and one five three three two.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, and do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
They're moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Did you catch those, Sheri, or do you want me to name names?
I got the motion by Vice Mayor Martinez, seconded by Councilmember Medina.
Oh, I had member Donahue, but perfect.
Okay. Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye, and I want to thank staff for all their work on this, and I want to thank the developer as well, and appreciate that. So, that brings us.
We have one additional item, which is the resolution approving the MAC5 contract for the arts center.
I'm getting there. That brings us to eleven, but we don't have to do this one by title only, correct?
Correct.
So, um, so that brings us to eleven point one point two. I don't think, do I have a motion?
I move MAC5.
All right, I have a motion from member Donahue, a second from member Medina. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye, okay. So, thank you for that. Eleven point two is another public hearing. And we have a short presentation, although I don't know that we need one, but we'll take one.
All right, I'm going to bring up Maru. And we're going to try a little something different. She is going to share her own screen.
Excellent. It can only go well.
Sound check, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Pats, council members. Let me just start this presentation. So these are a couple of amendments to the cannabis regulations. As you may recall, in April of this year, the council directed staff to prepare an ordinance to amend the planning regulations to do two things. One is to allow distance requirement for retail cannabis sales from parks, greenways, and other sensitive uses to be reduced or waived with a conditional use permit, including including the reduced distance will not compromise the public health, safety, and welfare. Can't quite read my own screen, yeah, that's much better. And the second thing that the council directed staff to do was to expand the range of zoning districts in which cannabis manufacturing uses may be located with a CUP to include MUR and MURS zoning districts. The goal was to further the growth of cannabis industry in Emeryville by adding flexibility to the distance requirements for retail sale users and to expand the range of zoning districts in which cannabis manufacturing uses may be located. In terms of a quick background, in April of 2017, the council adopted regulations to allow retail dispensaries and cannabis with a major CUP in the following three districts. In addition, cannabis sales were also permitted to locate within two hundred and fifty feet of any existing public parks, including greenways, religious institutions, elementary or secondary schools, or daycare facilities. So while our RFP process, the council selected Ohana, formerly known as Eastway Herobatics, and Rochambeau, they are now called Mad Men, as the two candidates who qualify to apply for use permit for cannabis sales. The commission approved the use permits for retail cannabis sales in early 2018, and additional four use permits for cannabis manufacturing businesses which are located in the northern part of the city along Hollis and Sixty-seventh Streets. In terms of distance requirement for retail cannabis sales, the proposal to modify distance requirements stems from Ohana's decision to move across the street from its current location on Philidoo Street into the space occupied by the Broken Wrap Sports Bar. The Broken Wrap is a for sale, and Ohana wants to relocate the cannabis dispensary to this location and occupy five thousand square feet of building with the relocated cannabis dispensary with the remaining area to be run separately as a restaurant. The proposal cannot be approved under our current regulations because it would be located within two hundred and feet of a public park, the Greenway in this case. And under current regulations, such a proposal would need to be processed as a variance for which staff cannot make the findings or an exemption to standards for which the proposal does not qualify. The third option would be to amend the regulations to reduce or waive buffer requirements to the finding that the reduced buffer will not compromise the public health, safety, or welfare. At the January Planning Commission study session, five of the six commissioners present felt that the third option was the most appropriate way to proceed. In terms of where cannabis manufacturing is allowed in the zoning districts, so currently, these are the five zoning districts where manufacturing facilities are currently permitted. Staff has been routinely receiving inquiries from businesses interested in establishing cannabis manufacturing in the city's MUR and MURS zones that currently cannabis sales are permitted but not manufacturing. Custom manufacturing, light manufacturing, and small food production, which is ten thousand square feet or less, are allowed with a CUP in MUR and MURS zones. All of the existing cannabis manufacturers in the city are similar in nature to custom light manufacturing and small food production. And those are also the inquiries that we have been receiving in order to locate in different parts of the city. Allowing cannabis manufacturing in MUR and MURS would bring additional properties in potential play. Further, as all cannabis businesses require a CUP from the planning commission, compatibility of any particular business with the surrounding area will always be assessed on a case-by-case basis by the commission. So the two changes to the to the code are section nine dash five twenty two oh seven regarding standards. And what you see underlined is the new language that is being proposed. And as you can see, you can read it, that the new language will be unless a condition use permit is approved with a finding that reduced distance will not compromise public health, safety, or welfare. The other thing that we are proposing to amend is the table, which is the use table, which lists all the uses which are permitted, conditionally permitted, or prohibited in the various zones in our city. And this change would allow cannabis manufacturing in the MUR and MURS districts of the city. So in order to approve this, the council needs to make these four findings. Staff and the commission believe that these findings can be made. The amendments are consistent with the general plan policy, LUP twenty-seven, which states that a diversity of commercial uses to insulate cities' fiscal base from downturns and particular market shall be maintained. In addition, the current manufacturing businesses and inquiries from potential businesses indicate that they fall in the category of custom manufacturing or light manufacturing or small food production type uses. And these type uses are currently permitted in both the MUR and the MURS zones. In addition, as all cannabis businesses sell or manufacturing require a CUP from the commission, compatibility for each proposal with the surrounding area can be assessed on a case-by-case basis and ensure that the public health, safety, and welfare of the community are not compromised. The proposed amendments, in addition, will benefit the public by adding to the economic base of the city and allowing additional properties to establish cannabis retail and manufacturing businesses. In terms of environmental review, this proposal is exempt from sequel guidelines, section fifteen thirty-three two, which applies to info projects, as well as fifteen oh six one, which states that the proposal can be seen as a certainty that there is no possibility the proposal may have a significant effect on the environment. In terms of planning commission action, the commission reviewed this at their June meeting and approved the amendments and recommended the council do the same. And the vote was six zero vote. Commissioner Sohene had an excused absence at that meeting. So our recommendation, both the staffs and the commission, is to introduce the ordinance after a motion to read by only read by title only, take public testimony regarding the ordinance, and adopt the first reading of the ordinance. That concludes my presentation. I would be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. If you would stop sharing your screen, it's just easier for me to see. Thank you. Any questions from council members before I open the public hearing? Okay, seeing no clarifying questions, I have eight forty-five to open the public hearing.
There are no comment cards. That last four digits, twelve eighty-one, has a comment.
Great.
Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, as everybody knows, you know, the law has to be rationally based, has to be measurable. Otherwise, it is capricious. So if you'll notice, if you listen closely to what Maru said, the reason the city can find no reason why you can't approve this. And what's the the information that's of interest in that is the is the fact that this cannabis selling is going to be going on right next to a public park, which the ordinance, existing ordinance recludes. Okay, so you noticed that Maru and the planning commission said that there's they're finding that it's not going to be a problem, though. And in fact, the reason why they can say that without explaining why it's not going to be a problem is because there was never, it was never explained at all when this ordinance, this silly marijuana ordinance was was drafted in the first place. If you go back and you look at it, there's no reason given why marijuana can't be sold near a park or near a religious institution or like what, Jesus is offended or something? There's no reasons were ever given. It was just taken as, if you look at it closer, you see, it's just taken as, I guess, quote, common sense, close quote, that marijuana should not be sold near a park. But but that's capricious. So the fact that you guys are able to just overturn this reg this ordinance so easily without any explanation should inform you that the original ordinance is ridiculous and should be stricken because, you know, you don't want, again, you have to have, it has to be measurable and rationally based, not capricious or like emotional. So not only should you, of course, allow this marijuana to be sold near the Greenway, you should go back and get rid of this silly ordinance that we have to stop you from having to go through this silly ordeal every time a marijuana seller wants to locate in Emeryville. It's just silly and ridiculous, and it also breeds, you know, cynicism. You know, we should have a, we should have better functioning city government. So I I think you should just insist that the ordinance be rationally based and not capricious. Say yes tonight and then go back and just get rid of the silly marijuana ordinance or force the whoever wants to move it forward to explain why marijuana shouldn't be sold near a religious institution or a park and have that be rational, have the reason be rational and not just emotional. So there's that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other public comments?
I don't see any, no.
Great, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at eight forty-nine. I will look for any comments from the, go ahead, member Medina.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually find myself in a position of agreeing with the previous caller. When we originally considered this this ordinance, one of the things that I did a lot of research on was buffer zones prior to that meeting. And there's no evidence, no data collection around marijuana usage in buffer zones. In fact, tobacco buffer zones have been shown to be not effective at all in preventing teen smoking in many cities. That's why I recommended we go with a smaller buffer zone of two hundred and fifty feet in Emeryville, which is much smaller than other cities. Maybe I should have just gone whole hog for it and said we should do no buffer zones because they're not actually scientifically done. I get why it makes people uncomfortable. I'm sensitive to the cultural concerns of our community. I don't think we should let it hang us up tonight. You know, I'm happy to move this forward this evening, but I'm open to a conversation about buffer zones. It is not an evidence-based policy unless any new evidence has arrived in the intervening couple of years.
Member Bouters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Medina, but for the benefit of the caller, I would also just like to recharacterize the nature of the ordinance and explaining why it is the way it is because I think the caller's frustration just exposes perhaps some lack of historical knowledge that the community at large might benefit from. One of those is that the city attorney's office recommended the two hundred and fifty feet to have it comport with the Medicinal Cannabis Use Act ordinance at the time. I see my colleagues nodding, so they recall as well. And so the goal was to not create legal confusion. We all were, I think, in agreement not to have buffer zones at all when we had the discussion. But I think the conservative legal advice, I mean, after the passage of Proposition sixty-four, which allowed cities to set no buffer limits, right? But there were a number of flaws in the drafting of Prop sixty-four that created conclusion and incongruent legal application between it and the pre-existing Medical Cannabis Use Act. So the laws have subsequently been changed by the state legislature that have allowed us to do that without having any ramifications as to whether we were in violation of those rules. And then just additionally to the claim that we should just abolish an ordinance altogether, we're actually required to have one. Proposition sixty-four requires us to pass an ordinance, and it requires us at a baseline to have provisions that spell out how we will govern and manage operation permits, use permits. All of those things are outlined at a high level in Proposition sixty-four and specified for the city to take decision-making authority on, but to enumerate in law in order to proceed with the cannabis industry regulation and operation in the city. So I just want to thank the city attorney's office, and in particular Andrea and council, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Martinez for their work very early on on this and their their leadership. And I think that the legal guidance we've received has been accurate, but for the benefit of the public, the the city council is following proper procedures, and this ordinance is necessary to continue operating, and I support tonight's recommendation.
Great, any other comments? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will also be supporting the ordinance tonight, and I thank my colleagues for the background and their answers to the public speaker tonight. I agree, buffer zones are arbitrary and meaningless when it comes to cannabis. And I do, I just do want to correct the caller and let him know that the the whole ordinance is cannabis. We're not calling it marijuana anymore. That is an outdated term that some would say was invented to demonize Latino users of cannabis. So with that, again, you know, just want to reiterate what my colleagues have said. I'm I'm in favor of pushing this forward, and I'm also in favor of future dialogue to review these buffer zones as necessary.
Okay, member Donahue?
No, no, no comment.
No comment. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to read. No comment. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to read by title only, because it's too late for my pithy joke.
Motion to read by title only.
Second, the motion. Oh, I'll, member Donahue has that motion.
So we have a motion and a second to read by title only.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye, okay. And with that, I'll hand it over to the city attorney.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville amending Article Two of Chapter Three and Article Twenty-two of Chapter Five of the Planning Regulations at Title Nine of the Emeryville Municipal Code to allow cannabis manufacturing businesses in additional zoning districts and to allow reduced distances between cannabis sales activities and parks, greenways, and other sensitive uses. CEQA status exempt pursuant to state CEQA guidelines, sections one five three-three-two and one five zero six-one B-three.
Okay, great. And I'm gonna move the ordinance and ask the vice mayor for a second.
Oh, a second?
You have a motion and a second?
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye, okay. And that is the end of the hearings. We move on to action items. That brings us to twelve point one.
And I believe Diana Kena is presenting for us?
Yes.
All right, let me get your presentation open.
Are you ready? And can everybody hear me?
We can hear you, and we are ready.
All right. So this is about an application to Caltrans and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission for an active transportation program grant of thirteen point nine million dollars for bicycle and pedestrian portions of the Fortieth and San Pablo Bus Hub project. We are requesting design funding of one point seven million for fiscal year, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, and construction funding of twelve point two million for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. Next slide, please.
Um, before I do, Diana, I'm, it's not, uh, coming through very loudly here in the chamber, so if you could make it a little louder, that would be great for the recording.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. In March of twenty twenty, the council approved the concept design for the Fortieth and San Pablo Bus Hub project with transit, pedestrian, and bicycle improvements with an estimated cost of sixteen point eight million dollars. Caltrans at this, in the same month issued a call for active transportation program grant applications for bicycle and pedestrian projects. Some of those funds go to regional agencies, and we are encouraged to apply to Caltrans and regional agency, and whatever Caltrans doesn't fund, M T C will consider. Next slide, please. Um, meanwhile, for the countywide transportation plan, there is a draft project list that includes the entire Fortieth Street Transit-only lanes and multimodal enhancements for sixteen million dollars. The Alameda County Transportation Commission is expected to consider adopting this in December of this year. And if that happens, it would make some funding possible, not guaranteed, and not necessarily all of it. So that's why we're applying for the bike ped part from this other grant, so maybe the county can fill in the transit part. Next slide, please. The, uh, brief project description in the Active Transportation Program Grant Application is two-way separated Class Four bikeway on the north side of the street, multimodal intersection improvements, realignment of curbs at bus stops, and side medians protecting bikeways. And of course, there's more to it than that, but that's what's in the brief highlights. Um, this application does not include bus lanes, bus shelters, or expanding bus stops on the south side, but it does include bu- boarding islands because they are, they shorten pedestrian crossing distances and are buffers for the bike lanes. Next slide, please. So here is the, um, project plan with, uh, callouts about protect, um, safety improvements. So you can see the green two-way bike lanes on the north side of the street and the orangey bus i- boarding islands, and crosswalks, ADA ramps, curb extensions, uh, crossings shortened. Uh, next slide, please. Refuge islands, lighting, bike crossing surfaces, protected corners, bike boxes. And next slide, please. Realigning the turn where the Bay Bridge Trail runs into the Fortieth Street Bike Lane. And signal timing. Next slide, please. Uh, one of the questions on the application is what other projects will help to make this a transformative project? So we're listing the Fortieth Street Bus Improvements, Alameda County Transportation Commission's San Pablo Avenue Corridor Improvements, the bus and bike lanes in that, in Oakland and Emeryville, A C Transit's I eighty to Powell Interchange Access Improvements, which are now an M T C project, the roundabout and bus lane, um, at Towers, and onto the, uh, bridge, and some development projects, the Arts Center, which you just talked about, Intersection Residential Project and Sherwin Williams, which includes a greenway extension, and capital projects, the South Bayfront Bridge, May Bl- Crosswalk on San Pablo, Bike Signal Priority ID Grant, and Village Greens. Next slide, please. Um, we have some letters of support. The Emeryville Commission on Aging and Emeryville Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, these are citizen advisory committees, and they advise the city council, and so, um, their letters are written to the council and asking the council to pass them on in the application. And we have letters of support from A C Transit and Emery Go Round, Walk Oakland Bike Oakland and Bike East Bay, E A H Housing, which built Estrella Vista at thirty-seven oh six San Pablo, R C D, which is applying for thirty-six hundred San Pablo, Assembly Member Buffy Wicks, and State Senator Nancy Skinner. Next slide, please. We have already sent things to M T C and Caltrans. Um, M T C has offered some staff technical assistance and gave me some uh, suggestions for minor edits to make the application more competitive. And we sent a Caltrans Right-of-Way Impact Checklist to Caltrans with a project plans ma- map and an engineer's cost estimate. So they can sign it and give it back to us to put in the application. Next slide, please. So the dates are, um, our, our proposal is due September fifteenth. The paper proposal is due November fifteenth, no, October fifteenth. And then they have a couple months to read it, and then in February, Caltrans staff recommends, um, the statewide portion of the program. In March, the California Transportation Commission adopts that. And then whatever they don't fund, in April, the Metropolitan Planning Organizations, that is, M T C here, draft, uh, send the draft recommendations to the commission, and in May, they send their final recommendations. And in June, the commission adopts the N P O selected projects just in time for July one start date. Next slide, please. So that completes my presentation. This is the little image I use on the title page. Um, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any clarifying questions? Okay, well, oh, member Bouters?
Am I on mute? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I have, um, I, I, I have, I have some questions. Um, you know, the, I, I really appreciate staff, um, going after this. Um, this was something that, you know, I, I, I asked the, the council to look at expanding beyond Fortieth and San Pablo Bus Hub, and I noticed the interplay of the Bus Hub title and then the Fortieth Street Bicycle Track title. You, sounds like you noticed that, too?
Well, the Bus Hub project is the whole project.
Okay, so I guess that-
To this grant.
Okay, so I guess I have several questions. One is, um, when we reviewed this as a council, um, the estimate was between eighteen and twenty-two million dollars, and I recognize that that's, this thirteen point nine million is excluding transit elements to the project, things like the bus, the bus, um, stop and the bus lane improvements and some of the, probably the median work. Um, and I'm, I'm just wondering, because the, uh, grants like this require us to use them within a certain period of time. I mean, this is such a comprehensive project, like, what, where is the staff proposing to get the other nine million dollars?
Well, that's what we hope to get for being in the countywide transportation plan, from something like O Bag or Measure B B or something like that through the county. And we did design the project, so it could be built by itself.
Yeah, and so I guess these, these seem like staff decisions that don't reflect the ca- the commit, the council. Um, I, I have a lot of issues with how this was being brought to us. I'm supportive of us doing this, and I think we've been supportive of finding funding for it. Um, and I noticed it went to B P A C and the Commission on Aging. It didn't come back to us um, at Transportation Commission and perha- or committee, and perhaps staff didn't think that because we were so in favor of the project and let's, let's go do it. But I don't think we discussed breaking it into these discernible pieces. Um, and to me, it just begs the question of what's the staff strategy, because, um, by dividing these things and saying, well, these could be independent, separate projects, um, it's lacking, i- i- it lacks the vision of multimodality, so we could potentially just have bike lanes but no transit lanes with no bus stops on them, uh, you know, new bus stops on them. Like, it, it just begs the question of like, what is the strategy? Just to do it piecemeal as we go. Um, and also, I, I noticed for, for this, um, you know, one of the things I had asked about, and I kind of got grilled by staff, um, in December, was I said I had a lot of interest in looking at, could we close certain streets one-directional to further narrow the pedestrian crossings along the north side of Fortieth Street? And there was support from the council to discuss that in the future. And staff's response at the time was, um, this is just a high-level sketch before we would apply for anything, or we would move forward with this, we can come back with that. So I let go of the issue, but now I see a proposal that is going to go to C T C and get Caltrans buy-off and sign off on estimates, and M T C approval, and I'm gonna wager a guess that that means by sending this, we can't make those changes. So unless staff wants to correct me on my assumptions on this, I just have a lot of concerns. I get that there's a deadline. Um, but it looks like there was all this time to engage all the other stakeholders and committee members, and I would have loved to have seen this, um, again, for a discussion on completeness and strategic positioning for money in July. And I just feel like staff just decided to do what staff wanted to do, and it feels like staff has procedurally avoided the council. I'll be very honest with you.
The Transportation Committee is an advisory committee to the council. The reason I went to the, we went to the B P A C and the Commission on Aging was to get letters of support.
Okay, so why, why was there no presentation to the Transportation Committee to say we're going to potentially separate this project into separate projects, um, that would each need their own independent sources of funding? Especially when, um, council member Medina and I have told the committee and the staff repeatedly, um, that given my position on A C T C and my role in helping roll out O Bag funding and these other sources of funding, of which, by the way, there are only twenty-two million dollars of it this year for fourteen cities across the county. So the idea that we would get nine is, of that is not probable. Um, so just the strategic rollout of this and how we would get funding, it feels like council, um, the council direction at the committee level to be involved in this project, it feels like staff ignored that. That's the feedback I'd like to provide.
We've never taken a grant application to the Transportation Committee, I don't think. And this is an active transportation program grant. It does not pay for bus improvements.
I understand that, but my, my under- maybe the city manager would like to intervene at this point, because I'd like someone to explain why we, why we are, and you're on mute, Madam City Manager, but why, why, why this was broken into pieces without that being previously explained to council?
Because there's no money that, there's nobody that can fund that much.
I could just jump in on this. Um, I think, uh, staff was taking advantage of a, of a grant deadline opportunity and was moving forward with the things that were grant-eligible as part of the project. But the reason this is coming to the council for your review before the grant is submitted is for exactly this type of policy conversation. And so, um, I would suggest that if the council wants to see this funded as a complete project, or perhaps even have some additional changes made, design-wise, as you were alluding to earlier, that you don't approve this application. And that we, we re-look at it in a different format, and we forego the opportunity to apply for this fourteen million dollars to do only the portions of the project that are eligible for this funding type, and go back and look for a different type of funding that would fund the whole thing. And granted, that, that might take longer, but it would be a complete project.
Can I, can I ask you to clarify in two points then that I would like to address? One is, by sending in the submission with the draft proposed project as it's been outlined on the attachment to the application, does that mean that we're not eligible to make further amendments or pedestrian enhancements to what we're proposing?
I, I need the staff to address that, Diana or Charlie?
Charlie has his hand raised? Or did a moment ago?
Very good, Charlie.
It wasn't to, it wasn't to respond to that question, though. Um, I don't really know the answer to that, but I would say that the, the first portion of the grant is for design. And if there were modifications we wanted to make during the design process, I would think we could do that. Uh, perhaps, uh, Diana has further information about that. She's, she's talked to the funding agencies in, at length and in detail, which I have not, so she may have a better sense of, of how much wiggle room we have there. Diana, do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, not really. The, it, this is a concept plan, and the design will flesh things out. And we can add things then. It would increase the cost.
So I'm just looking for a yes or no confirmation from staff. If, I, I'd like to ask my, I'd like to ask my question. So my question is, if we approve this tonight, we will be able to make subsequent design changes to this, and it will still not affect the grant? May not give us some, may not give us the money we need, but it will not affect the grant.
I think the answer is we don't know. We would- I could give an, if I could give an additional answer to that council member, one of the things that had been discussed with me prior to staff completing this report was applying only for design funding, which I was supportive of. And that might be a way, if the council was interested in pursuing some funding from this A T P, is to only apply for the design funding portion of these elements. And that wouldn't then, you know, since staff is unable to answer that question tonight, we don't want to make a commitment for only, if the council doesn't want to make a commitment for only, or risk making a commitment for only a portion of the project, that might be a way to continue moving the project forward without risk of boxing us in.
If we apply for design funding, we have to show the project and, um, budget for the whole project.
That's fine. I think the issue I have is if we, if staff aren't able to answer that question tonight, that would be a reason why coming to the committee would have allowed me to air that question so that we could answer that tonight. Because now I don't know if pedestrian improvements that I know residents would like to see in the neighborhood um, have a chance of being vetted by the council after tonight if we were to just vote to approve the staff recommendation. Um, and I raised that in the past, and I was advised by the planning director back in December that I would have a chance to address that. So I do feel that this has moved ahead without the council's direction, actually. Um, so I will be supporting only, um, design elements tonight, because I don't think that the staff are prepared to answer the questions necessarily.
Staff is seeking to fund the product, project that was approved in March by the council.
Hey, I've made my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, uh, respond just on the issue of the future changes, my recollection is that those, uh, changes were requested by the B P A C, and that our response to the B P A C, which I believe we then reported to the council, was that we could consider those in the future as a separate C I P project, sep- separate from the, uh, from this transit hub Fortieth Street project.
But why would we do that? If we, if we could take the time and just decide, yes, there's a couple streets that we would like to reduce traffic flow to make it more pedestrian-friendly, why would we add another C I P project that would require another design review, that would require more construction to redo the same crossings? I mean, I, I, I understand that we can't always do everything at once. Um, but I think my concern is one that staff aren't prepared to answer grant questions tonight, which makes me unsure that this is the right thing to move forward with, and it's at the deadline. And there's been a pattern of this on transportation projects, because when I came in in twenty seventeen, um, the, the, the first thing we did was we had grant applications where, um, staff brought it and it was right at the deadline, and it forced me to go argue for paving money for Frontage Road the following year. So I, 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 I think that there's no answers to some of the questions that are important. But then the other thing is, if we do go after construction money and we get this two-year window to use it, the state wants to see that cities use the money it's given. So we're gonna go forward with the, this portion of the project, right, which we all support and we agree needs to be done, but it kind of just leaves in the lurch these other elements that make it actually a successful project. And I, I, I am concerned that if we build the project because we don't find the matching money, then we lose the opportunity to say we have match on the table to pull in the transit money. I see what staff are saying, which is, hey, we, we get this fourteen million dollars, we would have money out there that could be used to their funds and perhaps build the other components of the project. But there hasn't been any suggestion or proposal about what the timelines are for those other sources of funding, what grants there are, heard O Bag, but there's only twenty-two million dollars of O Bag money available this year, as I mentioned. And then the next, the next time they're gonna put it out is at the end of twenty twenty-two, and we're already into the, the two-year construction period under that. So the chance to- And we're already into the, the two-year construction period under that. So the chance to find matching money is potentially diminished, especially with some of the funding sources being impacted by COVID. So this is all part of just a conversation I would have liked to have had. And if this city manager's perspective is this is the time to do it, I'm raising it. I'm just one person here at the council. Perhaps my colleagues have other thoughts. I appreciate the mayor of giving me the amount of time I've had to discuss this, but as our representative on the Transportation Commission, this just doesn't feel like it's been lined up with anything else. And so I'm just wondering what the staff strategy is to get the money to do the whole project. That's my comment.
Well, it is in the county.
Oh, wait, stop, stop. Thank you. I'm going to move to other council members' questions, open up to the public, and then we'll come back around. I apologize for screaming stop, but I don't, didn't plan to bring my gavel to a Zoom meeting. So. All right. Other clarifying questions, because I want to get back on the right path here. Seeing no clarifying questions, do we have any comment cards? Or?
We have, uh, we have one raised hand, last four digits, 1281. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Uh, first of all, that that was those, that line of questioning was not, couldn't be characterized fairly as clarifying questions. That was substantive debate. So to the mayor who runs the meetings, please make sure you, the clarifying question section, uh, is used, uh, the way it's supposed to be. In the future, please make sure you don't devolve into substantive debate like you just did. Now I have a question to Diana Kena, the staff member who made the presentation. If you look at the, I have a direct question, hopefully she can answer just whether yes or no. If you look closely at the drawings on the, oh, the, the, where it goes, the plan view over the bridge, you'll see what separates the, the bikes from the vehicles is what's called this raised side, side median. Now, what I would like to know is I, I should know this, but I don't. I would like to know, is that is that a K rail? Is it concrete or some thing that goes up, uh, so a vehicle can't crash into the bike lanes? Or is it just some low thing that could? I need to know what is that specifically? Is it K rail? Because if it's not K rail, if it's just some low thing that a vehicle could go over, well, this is much more dangerous for bicyclists that's designed than what we have right now. Because remember what we have, same bridge width, we have, uh, two vehicle lanes and two bike lanes. What this new, new quote improved, close quote, uh, plan is, we have three vehicle lanes and two bike lanes. And so the vehicles are much closer to the bikes. So if it's K rail, well, then the bikes are safe. Although I would still maintain that like big buses and trucks going zooming past inches away from bikes, even when separated from by K rail, is psychologically disturbing for bicyclists. It feels unsafe and it's not a pleasant place to be, right next to fast-moving large trucks. So even the psychol, even like, even with K rail, psychologically, it's not going to be a comfortable place. So just so everybody knows here, K rail or not, it's not an improvement for bicycling. It's, it makes bicycling less, at least psychologically less sick, and if not actually less sick. They're more, they're closer, much closer to the moving vehicles than they are right now. Right now, there's like a 10-foot buffer between the moving vehicles and the bicyclists. So I wanted to ask, uh, after, after I sign off of, of Diane, that Kena could please just answer, what is the raised side median? Is that a K rail or is it something different? Not, I would like Ms. Kena to answer that if she could. Thank you very much.
Hang on. Please don't respond until I call on you. Thank you. Okay. So. Uh, do we have any other public comment?
Uh, no.
None?
None.
Move on to council discussion. Member Medina.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I agree, um, with the sentiment that it would have been useful to have a conversation at the Transportation Committee. We did have a last meeting, I believe we had a substantive discussion about funding sources, and that's the thing we do routinely there. And it would have been incredibly appropriate to have as be part of that conversation. And so I hear Councilmember Batters' concerns about paying for part of it and then not having the rest of the money on the table. So I think a discussion I'd like to have for Councilmember Batters right now, as our ACTC rep, um, our city manager and staff are, what are those funding options and what is the timeline to best line up with those? Like, is this the last window of a big chunk of funding because the state is going to be cutting off the pipeline? And is that why we should just go for it now, even if it's not a perfect solution? Is there a, a major benefit to not applying to this time? And also, I'm just going to be like hyper aware. ATP is not a giant pool of money. So getting a $14 million chunk out of it seems ambitious. Would we be more likely to get just the design scope money?
So I'm going to go to the city manager for that.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, I was trying to write that down. Can you say the last part again?
Oh, given the, the amount of the ATP pool is not extremely large, would it be more strategic for us to apply for a smaller amount than the 14 million for the design scope of the project? Would we be more likely to get that funding if we were to do it that way?
I can't say for sure, but I think, um, I think Councilmember Batters' point about the limited amount of money available in the CTP is relevant. We had, as an internal staff, talked about the competitive nature of our application, given the lack of, uh, local match funding. And initially had, uh, internally discussed a application for planning or design money. So, um, I believe Diana has had conversations with staff at MTC and maybe could shed some light on the likelihood of the award. So I will defer to her. But, you know, I think, I think we're aware that it's a competitive round. So Diana, can you address that specifically if the mayor's comfortable with that?
Please.
Well, we were talking with MTC about whether to offer a match or not, and he said the match would be a percentage of the total project, whether you're applying for the whole project or not. So we really didn't address the question of whether the project be more likely to fund it if we only applied for design money.
Member Medina, did that answer your question?
I think the answer is we don't have a, a, a good answer to that question either in terms of whether it's going to be highly competitive.
Okay. And my other question, um, the manager, if I may continue, Mayor?
Please.
Um, was, you know, what are the other funding sources and would getting this chunk just for the bike pedestrian portion possibly limit our applications in the future? And I guess that's a question for both you and my fellow council member Batters. I'd like to hear from you first.
Um, from my perspective, I don't think it would limit our, our applications in the future, but I do think there is the timing issue of, of construction versus finishing the full project.
Uh, I believe she asked Member Bowers as well to weigh in on that.
Only, the only items I'll say about funding are that, um, the Alameda County Transportation Commission is putting $22 million of funding out for RFP. And as, uh, Councilmember Medina knows, as the chair of our committee, we asked staff to come with projects that could be eligible for funding. We had a funding conversation to discuss prioritizing things, and we explicitly discussed this project, actually. Um, and we discussed it in light of the small amount of money this year and the fact that the next cycle of funding will be in the fall to winter of '22. Um, and at that time, it's estimated to be $63 million. And that will be a combination of Measure BB funds, Measure B funds, and Obag II funds. Um, and those funds are from different, uh, two county sources and one federal source. And so there is a higher likelihood of, um, getting larger amounts of money then. But the city manager is correct, there isn't. We wouldn't be less competitive necessarily. It wouldn't be that we would that we would have more of a chance or less of a chance. Obviously, you're playing with less money in the pot, right? So this may be an appealing application to the staff this year because there may be fewer applications for ATP money. And MTC is maybe suggesting this would, would be an opportunity. But what I'd like to propose is that the risk I see is finding, finishing the project, because the project is not just successful as a bike project, it is designed to have transit elements to it. And so for me, the question is just where do you get, how do you use the window of the money that the state would give you, the CTC funding to get a match, right? So we'd have to sometime within getting that award, we'd have to be able to go and aggressively apply for the balance of this money, right? And there's only going to be one opportunity at the county level to do that, and that will be in the fall of '22, which basically then is forcing the hand of the city council to say, our ask is going to be to the county that year to make the match funding. Because my concern, and staff don't seem to be able to answer this question, but my, my assumption right now is that once we have the window of construction time passes, 23, 24 is the second year for the construction, we don't have any money left on the table to offer as match. We don't have anything that we could use to say, here, we have this other money to do this. Maybe they're going to say, oh, the first, we did phase one of the project and that's sufficient match. I haven't heard of that, but I, I can't get that answer tonight. So that's my concern is that we will move forward and it would be a great bike project, but it's missing pedestrian elements that we wanted to discuss. The staff didn't bring that back like they were supposed to. And it doesn't have a plan or a strategy for how to get match funding, and the window will be a certain fixed period of time. So those are my concerns. It's not that those things are, to Councilmember Medina's question, it's not that those things can't be overcome or it wouldn't be possible to deliver on it. But there's just been no strategy presented. It just looks like staff just went out and did this and are just think, uh, apply for anything. Um, and it just concerns me that that may not actually yield a complete project in the end. That's my concern.
All right, thank you. I want to give, uh, Member Donahue and the Vice Mayor a chance to weigh in on this. So Member Donahue? You're on mute, sir. Scott, you're on mute.
It seems very speculative how it is now. Maybe we should just proceed with going for design.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I don't have anything to add. I hear my colleagues concerned and I'm, um, I'm also struggling with how to move forward.
Thank you. I am a little concerned that there is money on the table that we could have taken advantage of, particularly in these financial times where our budgets are going to get tight and tight and tight. And we have set up these advisory committees to provide, or present staff and the community opportunities to weigh into these projects. And I'm very concerned that we jumped over that. And so as we move forward, whether with this project or other areas, that we begin to leverage those meetings to make sure that we are getting our questions answered early and often so that we don't come to a meeting with a deadline like this. You know, I trust in my colleagues on the Transportation Committee to vet these things and rely on them because I know that's their area and that's the reason we have them on those committees. So with that, since Member Bowers started us on this, I'll come back to him to see if he has further thoughts or emotion or anything.
I want to ask the chair of the committee what her preference is because we don't do anything independent of one another. And I'm not trying to put you on the spy, but we do everything together on this, so I'm asking you.
Yeah, I mean, listen, obviously I want all the money and I want to build it right now. But we, we do need to think leaving nine million out is going to be challenging, I bet, in a few years to get that $9 million if we don't have a plan in place, knowing where all city and county budgets are headed. Um, I would like to ask staff how much of it, um, could be considered design? Like, how many millions would we be asking for if we won't that?
Design is only 1.7 million.
Oh, it's not a very large ask, this project.
No, the majority of the money is construction. I, I guess if it's possible to make a motion with a caveat, I mean, my caveat is that I want to know that the city council can amend this application to make the pedestrian improvements that have been previously discussed and tabled at the request of staff. Because I'm not interested in having a whole new CIP item to do this again in the future. I mean, the people are going to look at this corridor, and I think staff know this, they're going to look at this corridor and say, well, you just gave you money to do this stuff. So this is essentially allowing staff to circumvent the council on a policy matter if we do that, which is they will have tabled a discussion about narrowing pedestrian crossings at streets, and then they will have put us through with an application that gets us money to do a specific project that avoided that question. And then it will force us to have a whole new CIP adoption to put this new thing in, which won't get funding at any point in the near future. And so I, I just don't appreciate the way this was handled because to me, it just feels like staff deliberately avoided the conversation we, we agreed to table but asked to have. And they can't answer the questions tonight, which tells me that they didn't provide all the information to any of the advisory committees either, because people weren't asking questions that needed to be asked. So I'm, I'm, I see Charlie has his hand raised, Mr. Mayor, and I'd be happy to hear from staff again.
So, um, I'm happy to throw it to Charlie.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just one point of clarification. I'm, I'm not entirely clear on what the modifications are we're talking about. This design that, that we have had prepared and that the council has approved has narrowed the pedestrian crossings of the side streets, I believe, as much as we can through all of the various bulb bouts at the various intersections. The issue that I recall that the BPAC asked about and that we said could be a future CIP project was about closing streets north of 40th Street. Either making them one-way or closing them entirely to through traffic. So you would basically have cul-de-sacs coming off of Park Avenue and ending at 40th Street in order to have continuous pedestrian crossings of those intersections. That is not included in this project, but the narrowing of the pedestrian crossings of the side streets to the extent that we possibly can is included.
Yeah. And Charlie, so in December, if you go back and watch the meeting in December of last year, the items that BPAC raised or items I raised at the meeting, um, I asked specifically that the streets that did not have traffic lights be narrowed into one lane, either coming southbound or northbound. So basically to discourage, uh, throughway traffic at all non-traffic lighted streets along 40th Street. And the consultant and you, if you go back and watch, both said that this was a detail of the design that we were just at a conceptual level and that before we went out for funding, that the design would be able to be reviewed further by the council. So my question is now we're at a point where you're going out for funding. And so I have flagged this, and the concern I have is that we never had that discussion again. And so having it as a separate CIP feels to me like staff are changing the narrative from what we all discussed. And I very vividly remember being asked, I had talked for 30 minutes at that meeting about this project, asked to let that go until such a time when we would have money for our design. And staff said, well, we're going to have to apply for, um, funding to do design work and you'll have a chance to provide further input in the future. And I said, okay, fine. So now I see design with construction. And it's eliminating the opportunity to do those things that BPAC members are saying that they would like to see, that council members have said we would like to discuss and potentially see. It's basically tabling all of that. And so it's not about the narrowing of it, it's about eliminating a travel lane. That was the conversation that I wanted to have. Um, and so I'm making a stink out of this tonight because I just think that there should be some transparency to the fact that when we ask for certain things to come back and staff tell us that they'll do that, I just feel like staff should follow through and do that.
Do you have a response, Charlie?
Sorry, I was on mute. Uh, no, I don't have anything further to add to that. Thank you.
It would be easier to add, to do what you're talking about now than to make the cul-de-sacs in the design phase.
I don't know what to make of that. Can someone interpret that for me?
I didn't understand.
I don't understand.
I think.
Could I make a, could I make a recommendation?
Please, I was going to come to you.
I have concerns about the city's ability to provide local match funding in the future. So to the extent that fully, um, full, full funding for full buildout would be contingent on a local match, we don't really have a good source for that right now. So if the council's interested in exploring further design changes and we can't assure you that by accepting this 13.9 million, were it to be awarded, that we would be, you know, we can't change what, that we can change the design, we can't answer you that tonight. I think the safest way to proceed is to, is to apply for design funding. But I understand that the staff would be, that the staff was trying to achieve the state of urgent action goals of going after the, you know, the most immediate funding that was available for this project that was identified in that state of urgent action resolution. So I want to acknowledge the staff's intent to do that, but also there are implications potentially of going after only a portion of the project.
Member Medina?
Thank you. Thank you very much, uh, City Manager. I, I really appreciate that framing. I, I really appreciate that framing and I do appreciate the push to get this project done. An idea, might be a bad one. What if we applied for design funding and the construction for the bike portion, which would be a smaller amount, so it would leave us more open to have a local match on the table later on? Wouldn't it be the full 14 million? Would be more than 1.7 million. I don't know how much more. Would that accomplish?
I believe what the, I believe that the 14, the 14 million is, is just design and the bike ped stuff. That's all it is.
Well, we'd be leaving off the ped stuff because there's pedestrian access points that you still want to scope out.
Just, yeah, I mean, the problem just becomes we're piecemealing the project in a lot of ways. I mean, here's the thing, I would be, if, if staff are acceptable or the city attorney is acceptable to a motion, I'd be willing to approve the staff recommendation only on the contingency that the staff can confirm to the council within three days in writing that the design elements related for pedestrian crossings can still be adjusted during application review phase or at some point prior to construction. And if it cannot, that the staff can only apply for the design money.
I would support that.
Staff, is that an acceptable motion, the city manager or attorney? Do you have any comments on that?
So, check here.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Charlie if, if he caught that?
I think I did. Let me repeat it. I believe the motion was to have staff apply for the whole thing, but on the condition that within three days of tonight's meeting, we provide an answer to the council in writing as to whether or not we would be allowed to make those design changes that Councilmember Bowers is requesting as a part of this application. And if the answer is no, then we would only go ahead and apply for the design funding and not the construction funding. Is that, did I get that right?
That captures it, yep.
And I didn't hear from the city attorney if that's reasonable. I saw her shake her head no.
Yes, that's a reasonable motion.
Okay. Before I have you frame that in the form of a motion, because you actually was at, you were asking a question. I have some strong concerns about just the sheer amount of money we're asking for. We're asking for over 50% of the available funds with the primary ask. If, did I, did I capture that correctly? I thought you said there was 22 million available.
That's if you're applying to the county. This, they're applying to the state, but to Ali's point, there's usually somewhere between 120 and 150 million dollars in the A T P funding every year.
Yeah.
I just heard that incorrectly, then I apologize. All right, then I'll go to you, Member Bowers, for a motion.
I just want to check if any of my council colleagues or staff have any final comments on this. I mean, I hate, I hate, go ahead.
Sorry, I would like, I would like just to ask one point of clarification. Obviously, if you pass this motion, more or less as I just tried to summarize it, that will mean that Diana will need to get in touch with the funding folks and just find out how much leeway we have in the design. And I just want to make sure that we're crystal clear about what design changes we're talking about. And it sounds to me like you're talking about narrowing the streets that intersect Fortieth Street from the north that do not have a traffic signal to one travel lane. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, yes. Nope, that's it, just the non-traffic light streets. So, and it doesn't have to be all of them in the end, but I just wanted to evaluate Hubbard Street, Holden Street, Haven Street, Emory, I'm sorry, Watts, those four streets. Not that all of them needed to be done, but just whether we could eliminate one travel lane and essentially narrow the street so that it's either northbound or southbound only to reduce vehicle congestion and vehicle movement in a residential area and direct it to routes that are actually arterial or, or traffic oriented routes. And so that's it, just would they allow us to further extend? If we had further evidence that we wanted to do for a couple of them, further reduce travel movement through that? Would that be an acceptable design change later in the process? If they say yes, and that would not impact funding, we maybe wouldn't get the additional funding on top of what we asked for, I understand that. But if we'd still be eligible for the amount we asked for, and you can confirm that in writing by Monday, because I understand that people need to get back to it. You have Friday and you need to get back to us Monday. If they can confirm that by Monday, I'm fine with the staff applying for this and then us having that conversation still. If they say, no, you wouldn't be able to change this, which means we have to do a whole new C I P, I'm just not interested in continuously adding C I P items for projects that we already told staff we want to discuss, so.
Can we say three business days, Mondays?
I'm happy to, oh, yeah, sorry, Tuesday is fine.
Yep, okay. All right, so we're still waiting to hear for the motion, Member Bowers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your indulgence on this item. I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation for item 12.1 with the following caveat, that the staff will contact the requisite funders to be determined by staff and will produce in writing a response to the city council not later than the end of business on Tuesday, September 8th, that will outline in an affirmative or a negative answer that the funding application, if we seek construction funding, will still allow for us to make moderate to minor design changes to the north side of Fortieth Street's crossings for the four non-traffic light intersections between San Pablo and the Fortieth Street Bridge for the potential of reducing traffic to one-way as part of the project.
Member Medina?
I'll second that.
Oh, and if, and if they do not get, sorry, I can see the city manager waiting for the caveat. And if they do not get the affirmation, then the application is limited to design funding.
I second the caveat as well.
Excellent. Okay, we have a very lengthy motion and a second.
So. Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. So I want to thank everybody for that, and I really appreciate the work that, uh, uh, Member Bowers and Member Medina do on the Transportation Committee. That is critical work. And I do really appreciate and trust your guys' judgment, although I'm worried about this grant. Okay, that brings us to item 12.2, the consolidation of the committees. I feel like we've talked about this a lot. Do we want a staff presentation? Or I'm seeing people are okay if we skip staff presentation?
The self-explanatory header.
Yeah, all right. So with that, I will go to public comment on this item.
No cards, and I don't see any raised hands.
Excellent, all right. Uh, Member Medina, I'll go to you for a discussion and/or a motion.
Oh, yeah, I'm really happy to go ahead and make the motion because the entire point of this is that it's going to save me like four words once a month, and I'm looking forward to that.
Is that a motion to read by title by only?
Oh, yeah, motion to read by title only. This is to save words, Andrea.
Second the motion.
Wave a motion in a second to read by title only?
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue? I saw his mouth say aye, I'm going to take that. Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye.
Should I go ahead and read it?
Please.
An ordinance of the city council, the city of Emeryville, amending Emeryville Municipal Code Section 4-9.01 to expand the scope of the Transportation Committee to consolidate the Transportation Committee with the Public Works Committee created by Resolution Number 95-131. Sequel determination exempt pursuant to sequel guideline 15061B3.
Excellent, thank you. So I'm going to go back to you, Member Medina, for a motion on the actual item. But before I do, I'm going to encourage you to use those free, four, those four freed up words at the Gilman Street field meetings. So you're up.
Ooh, I guess choose carefully on those ones. Yeah, so moved.
Carlin has a good list. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
A motion in a second?
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, that brings us to, we did department head reports earlier, but I want to make sure we didn't leave out any departments because I think we just did Planning Commission. So we have no other department head reports, correct?
I think that's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, future agenda items from council members. Do we have any requests? Member Donahue?
How about that electrical storm and fires? I would like to propose that the Sustainability Committee do a review of how we're doing on our climate action plan, which has got a certain 2030 deadline to see if we're fulfilling that and, and have a report come back to, to council about that. And, you know, if we're not looking like we're going to make our climate goals, we should then know that.
Member Vice Mayor, are you the liaison on that committee?
Not me.
Oh, it's you?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, I second that. Yes, got, let's go.
All right, I will support it as well. Member Martinez, Member Bowers, thumbs up? Good job following directions. Okay, any other future agenda items? Member Medina, nice quiet hand.
Uh, yeah, I would like to ask that the Transportation Committee have a discussion about enforcement for violations of blocking the bike lane and come back to the city council with some suggestions about how to improve enforcement there. And also that we work, the Transportation Committee, sorry, that's the first one. Let's do that one first. Am I okay with that? Great. The second one is that once B P A C comes up with some bike parking standards, suggestions, the Transportation Committee weighs in and then brings some vetted standard suggestions to be for our bike parking ordinance to the city council.
Okay, I'm in support, everybody in support? Excellent. All right, any other future agenda items or items for committees? Member Martinez?
Uh, Member Bowers brought to my attention that some local cities have actually passed delivery fee caps, which we had discussed at a previous meeting. And I understand that an update was brought to E D A C, but I would ask that, that staff provide a more updated update to E D A C at their September meeting and then bring the item back to council in October so we can evaluate the evolving condition of these delivery impact fees on our small local restaurant.
Before we do that, is it okay to see if that's a reasonable timeline for Chad?
Please. And, and yes, and absolutely.
Yes.
For publishing.
If I could jump in, Mr. Smalley and I have discussed this, and he's planning to agendize it for the next E D A C meeting in September. And then I think we can come back with an update from E D A C in October. And I see him popping on. If I've misstated you, Chad, please jump in.
You haven't, that's exactly correct.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure we didn't, because we're in September, so I didn't want that to go by. Okay, so I'm fully supportive, everybody else thumbs up? Do different moves from the hokey pokey each time. All right, other future agenda items? All right, I think that's it on that, okay. It is now 9:47, way later than I thought, but we stand adjourned. Thank you all for your excellent job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for running the meeting so well.